All right, it is 6:04 PM. I'm gonna call this meeting into session. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the universal liberty and justice of all.
All right, thank you. Oh geez, I forgot the moment of silence, sorry. Please just take out just a quick moment of silence as we consider those who've gone before us. Thank you, thank you for your reminder. Okay, roll call vote, uh, roll call please, not a roll call vote, not quite there yet.
Roll call, we're not quite there. Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Alter. Trustee Decker.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Smitty. Trustee Wallace. Also present, Attorney's Gilchrist Engel, and Treasurer Denise, and Deputy Judy.
Deputy Judy. Also Neil.
Deputy Judy.
Deputy Judy. Okay.
Neil is present and accounted for.
All right, so we have a few items on the agenda. We do have space if anybody else has business they wanna bring up at the end. I do wanna make one correction when we do go into executive session. I forgot to note that not only are we going to discuss the pending enforcement matter and seek advice from counsel, but we're also gonna discuss personnel matters. Wanna make sure that's on the record for tonight. All right, so we're gonna start with reviewing the organizational meeting. A chart, I'm gonna put that up on the board here, up on the board. There we go. Can't get out of teacher world. Okay. I tried to change the setup so that you guys at the far end would be able to see things a little bit better, so hopefully that's working. If you want me to go bigger or smaller, please feel free. I'm gonna review this, if you guys need to interrupt to change anything, please do. When we pass the organizational chart, this is what will determine how we handle meetings, how we distribute our sort of our workload throughout the year, and so on. Sets a lot of policies together, so for newer trustees, this is actually, this will kind of give you a framework for why we do a lot of what we do. Meeting in business, the business of regular meetings shall be as follows. Call to order, pledge allegiance and moment of silence, roll call, correspondence announcements, presentations as needed, mayor updates as needed, people to be heard section. Then we go through reports, committee reports, old business and new business. Procedure, meetings shall be conducted in accordance with parliamentary procedure with reference to the revised edition of Robert's Rules of Order. Meetings are regularly scheduled on the second Tuesday of each month, 6:00 PM unless otherwise advertised. Tentative agenda for each meeting, the board trustees should be prepared by the mayor and village clerk and given to the mayor and trustees and each department head on Friday before the meeting, which I think I made one time this year, maybe two.
Maybe.
Which is better than the previous year, but still not good, so my apologies on that. Official newspaper will be the East Press and the official bank will be Key Bank. Committees, the first name on each, on each committee is the chairperson, has the responsibility for the operation of said departments. The other trustee or trustee's name will act as advisor to the chairperson. It should be a duty of the chairperson to follow up with motions of the board pertaining to their department and see that they are properly executed. In the case of an emergency, the committee chair should notify the mayor or deputy mayor at once. As we go through this, one of the things I'm trying to do this year is get you guys more involved with everything that's going on, in part because you've been asking, in part because I need like 24 more hours in each day to handle everything that's going on. I've made strides to get you guys connected with all the emails and going on in some of the business things that we have going on, but I have not quite gotten there yet, so that's another thing I'm working on personally. We can talk through these, if any of you guys need to change, adjust, or wanna hop into any of these, please feel free. Code enforcement right now, Kevin is the lead on that with Deb in as well, are you guys both good with that? Kevin, Deb? Okay, great. Court, Bobby Ryan? Dog control, Bobby Ryan?
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is a good time because we have an attorney lined up who specializes in dog control and I'm, still have not gotten a chance to set up a meeting to review all of our policies, procedures, and so on and so forth with that attorney and with our dog control person, so this is a great time to hop in. We're gonna hop you in as a secondary here? Do you wanna be involved in that? Yeah, all right. All right, that's great. Oh, I should put Robert, sorry. Events, Kevin, still good to take the lead? And if anybody wants to hop in and support, please feel free to throw your name out. Fair Housing Officer Megan, are you interested in taking that on? It's a sort of a small thing that happens occasionally.
Yeah, I talked to Marie about it.
All right. Finance, Bobby Decker, still good? All right, anybody wanna hop in? Finance, I'd be working with Denise a lot, working with Bobby a lot. Dan? That'd be great, that'd be great. All right, highway, Bobby Ryan with the lead, Kevin as a second? Good? Okay. Uh, no, we can do more. Okay, that's great. All right, and Kevin, if you wanna be in there, you can always add you in there. I know you already, you're already doing a lot with highway anyway as you do all the event stuff, so. Local laws, Deb, Megan, still good? Anybody else wanna hop in? Don't need to if you don't want to.
Please, that'd be great.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Economic development, Deb? Speak up if you wanna hop in. Municipal office, this is one we came up with last year just so that we had a trustee who was kind of directly involved in what's going on in the office in case we're having issues and that sort of thing. Bobby, still good? Okay. Parks and grounds, Kevin? Deb, did you wanna hop in with parks and grounds?
I got planning and zoning.
Oh, right, okay. Planning and zoning.
I'll help with anything at any time.
Okay.
You can put me in there to help with that.
For parks?
Cause I know that we had talked about that a little bit, yeah.
All right, that's great. Planning and zoning, Deb? Public safety, Bobby? Does anybody wanna hop in with Bobby?
I'm just, I'm just curious, does that include EMS, fire, or is that?
No, because EMS and fire are all outside of. Just police. Yes, it is contract negotiation season, our contract is off at the end of our fiscal year. We've already started to do some of the preliminary work to get information to the police union, not much else I'd be able to share publicly anyway, but. So if someone else wanna hop in with public safety with Bobby, that's fine, if not, it's okay? Thank you, Kevin. Public works, water, Megan has volunteered to step up, does anybody else wanna learn the water system and be involved? That'd be great. So Dan there as well? One of the things I wanna do as soon as we can is get you guys tours of each of the facilities, it's, it's pretty fascinating. That's absolutely fine, in fact, and one of the things that we're gonna talk about is if you guys wanna stop by any of the locations, just, you know, like if you wanna stop by and see Neil and say, hey, what, what's going on, what do you got this week, that sort of thing, even though I think it's Bobby and now, is it Bobby and Dan now, or will be shortly? Highway to Harvard, yeah, anybody is welcome to do that, and honestly, the more that we do that, the more that we know day-to-day operations, so when we're discussing things that are involved, we're, we're more educated, so feel free anytime. Recycling, solid waste, Deb?
Oh, that's so much more.
I know it, that's working with their swamp and sort of, that sort of thing. Street lights, Kevin?
Yeah, I guess, usually the police, I don't think it's been done in quite a while, so we should.
They do it often.
Who's that?
Yeah.
Police?
Give me the reports for lights out and then I send them in.
Do we need this line anymore?
I also call them, I also send them, just in general.
Do we still need this line, cause I feel like if the system's working?
You probably don't, I mean, it's.
But Kevin doesn't have enough.
Maria did that, did that recently, cause there's like three out on Main Street.
You never know. They come at certain times, I just sent out another batch last week.
Done a check of that.
Within the last month.
Yeah, cause Maria, I gave her one on Main Street and she already had two on the list, so it was two over, I changed it to 13 and 15, I think.
So we can either keep this on, get rid of it, add people to it, what do you guys wanna do? Or we could have Bobby Ryan do it all? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. What do you guys? Okay, all right. Woods Brook. Kevin, you still good? I mean, we're kind of. This is the, this is exactly the one thing I was thinking about when I was going through the list, I was like, oh god, I haven't had Kevin on any of these emails. Absolutely, I'm so sorry about that. We'll, we'll get you updated with everything that's going on, where we are, we're actually nearing the end of both projects. I haven't heard back, but we have a potential closing date on the last house we're waiting on. And the work up in the town on the second location is going on right now, right? That's why they have the.
The road's closed.
Yeah, the road's closed. But yeah, all right, so yeah, does anybody else wanna be involved in Woods Brook? All right, anybody else wanting to adjust or alter anything? All right, this is great, thank you guys. Okay, so the appointments for two years, nothing, I don't think anything new is in here. Marines Village Clerk and Registrar, Deputy Registrar Judy, Sub-Registrar Denise, Acting Village Justice would be Harold, Court Clerk Holly, Bruce Rollins will be our Deputy Superintendent of Public Works, Nancy Quell as our Dog Officer, Transfer Station Operation remains Chuck. I don't think we had a fiscal auditor last year, do we have anyone lined up for that?
Usually it's the finance. Oh, you mean, I don't know.
I don't think we've had.
It's usually a trustee.
Usually trustee here does that?
We could train him. Makes sense.
I don't remember having it really. Yeah, it was a trustee, it wasn't an employee, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, Bobby Decker. Mark as our Building Inspector, Code Enforcement, Melissa Dadd is our Police Matron. Have we used Janet Dadd and Donis as our Police Matron as well?
She's said to be on, she was in today.
Great, thank you. And Kathy is our, I don't know if Kathy's been cleaning the DPW, but we definitely are using her as the office cleaner part-time. She doesn't come over here, does she? I'm gonna change that to office slash police cleaner, cause she's been doing regular work in there as well.
Do we want her to do here? Necessary need?
I don't think we need her. And then for our one-year appointments, Denise is Treasurer, Judy is Deputy Village Clerk, Neil's our Superintendent of Public Works. I should change that to a five-year appointment, just kidding. Waste Water, still provisional, cause he hasn't finished, that's Kathy Holbrook.
What's the status on that, it's been three years? Can he sign, classes for the, one A, cannot?
Everything stopped with COVID and they started back up recently.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Keith, is Keith coming back?
Yeah, it's gonna need to wait until he's done.
Keith is our Assistant. Dan Merrill remains our Emergency Wastewater Operator part-time until Kenny gets his test done, Sir Inspector Kenny, Assistant Sir Inspector Keith, Water Treatment Operator Jim Francis Hofer, and Assistant Josh. Zoning Board right now, these are the three in their current terms, and Planning Board, these are the three in their current terms, and we have a couple names that I failed to vet out, but I, that's just been because I've been so crazy busy, so that's something we'll try to do in the next week or two, maybe appoint them at the next May meeting.
If they're five-member boards, yeah, great.
And one other thing.
I just wanna confirm, both your boards are five-member boards?
Yes.
They have been, yeah.
Yes.
They'll be adequate for a forum.
We have to drop to the three.
If you get to a meeting that's less than three, you cannot legally hold a meeting. It's adjourned to the next regular meeting schedule.
Which is not good, somebody's trying to do something, you know, you have to keep putting them off and putting them on.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure that we have those names ready in the May meeting, so we get them appointed.
Can you talk about doing something like, I don't know, stipend or something for each meeting?
We have that budgeted in.
Yeah, and then COVID hit too.
Yeah, we didn't have any meetings.
It's, it's still, it's still in the budget, we still have that as a, as a small stipend for each meeting when they come. That was something we had it, cause it hadn't been the case before, and then COVID hit.
Well, I mean, hopefully that would get more people to come.
Right, but we do have what, three names?
I have three names, too.
We have three names, so we should be able to get at least one more in each board, possibly fill up one of the boards and have four in the other, which would be a lot closer, so May meeting, we'll have that ready to go. One more thing I wanted to mention to you guys, I had to sit down with Judge McClellan, they are in need of community service, they wanna get that started back up, they have the need, they're ready to go. I have two names, one has volunteered to do it, the other was passed around by a couple different people, so I'm gonna touch base with you guys in executive, cause that would be sort of a personnel thing. I also wanna touch base with Jerry, who did it before, just to fully make sure he doesn't wanna go back before I offer it, but I'm pretty sure that's the case, and also, I think he had said he would be willing to help out, train someone new up, so we'll talk about that more in executive, cause that's a personnel matter. But that's another thing I wanna have ready to go in the May meeting, is appoint a community service person, so. Nuisance Law, P Awards, should it come up, we would grab one name, one person from planning, one from zoning, and one village resident, that will be to be named. Our Workplace Violence Committee, Maggie, Mark, and Bernie, and our Ethics Committee, Maggie Kinney, Bernie, and Sarah, Sandra Sargoy, none of that has changed from previous years. That is the extent of the details in organizational meeting. Before we go on to some of the procedures, so unless you guys have any questions about what we've talked about, I could entertain a motion to approve all meeting in business procedures, committees, and appointments as laid out before we go into the new policies. Any questions, thoughts? Then can I have a motion? Thank you, Bobby and Bobby, any further discussion? All in favor of approving all meeting in business procedures committees and appointments as laid out?
Do we have to do a roll call or?
No, we can just say it. Opposer abstentions? All right, Carrie's. Now, a couple policies to talk through, Procuring Policy, all officials, agents, and department heads for the villages, it falls must first obtain the approval of the village mayor and/or committee chairman of that department for any purchase in excess of $1,500. In any, in the case of an emergency, the mayor or deputy mayor may approve such purchase, provided that the approval of such purchase could not wait until the next regular meeting. If a purchase is made under this emergency condition, the purchaser and the chief fiscal officer will inform the village board of such a purchase at the next board meeting. In any event, purchase will still be required to follow the guidelines set forth in the procurement policy. Hiring of Personnel, all salary personnel receive no overtime and may be called to work anytime by the chairman of the committee or by the mayor, deputy mayor. Salary personnel are on-call seven days a week and are required to work regular hours pertaining to the work week of the village. Benefits are not provided to part-time employees, all vacation time must be used by the end of each fiscal year, which is May 31st is the last day, June 1st is the next fiscal year. No vacation time will be held over. Overtime must be approved by the committee chair or the mayor. Any questions, comments on any of those policies?
Can I just ask, is there, on the emergency purchasing, is there a number somewhere, setting aside emergencies, of course, or prior to the purchase, a certain thing has to actually go through a board? So my, my question would be, if somebody wanted to buy $200,000 out of a truck, did they do it without going, without being put through a board?
No, they would've done that and they would've bought two of them.
Andy, you wanna tackle that?
Sure, so what the mayor went over was, correct, emergency purchasing, these only arise in cases of emergency, and no purchases in excess of $1,500 according to this policy can be made without first getting the approval of the mayor and/or a particular committee chair, which you just went through, who's the trustee head for that department. So there's a check there, the particular department can go nuts and buy what they want, but there's that check. The, before you vote on this, the procurement policy has written, it says attached.
I have it here, too.
And you have that, the village has its procurement policy, which kicks in for anything that is below, in general, the state law requirements. Under state law, any equipment purchase above $20,000 for any public works project above $35,000 requires public bidding. The village has lowered in its own procurement policy the equipment purchase, so just be aware that the village's procurement policy says anything in excess of $9,999 or equipment purchases of $10,000 or more also must be public bid. That's in the village's procurement policy, even though state law says $20,000 or above, in the village here it's $10,000 or above. And so, in the procurement policy, for things that are below those thresholds, it will set forth how many estimates you need, whether they be written or verbal, that no changes are being proposed, and that's in the village's existing and will continue to be the procurement policy.
Now, we've.
As we've gone over, there's certain exceptions to those, we won't go through tonight, but there are certain exceptions to the overall bidding requirements, public bidding requirements, but in general, these are gonna be your thresholds.
Now, these tend to come to play when we have an emergency of some sort, all of a sudden need to do something, and that's, well, no, emergencies have a sudden different.
No, emergencies are different, yeah, emergencies are.
Yeah, sorry.
Below $1,500 that purchase can be made immediately, even by the department, above $1,500, the check kind of the mayor or the trustee who's in charge of that particular department. These kick in on, you know, regular office purchases, computers, you just went through that.
Right.
There are certain requirements for getting either written proposals or verbal quotes, and how many you need, and that's what those, that basically those thresholds are.
So the, the notion of changing some of these thresholds would either balance out the flexibility of spending something and not having to get bids versus caution, caution of not overspending and making sure everyone's aware of what's going on.
If there's any change being proposed, it should be discussed as a whole board, and certainly the council would be to, all of this is founded upon getting the lowest responsible cost, the lowest responsible bidder, and you always tend to err on the side of making sure you have at least a minimum number of bids or quotes.
I don't think we've changed this procurement policy, except I think one time we changed numbers.
This one that I have.
Date is 17?
Last revised under Mayor Boer, correct.
So that is the attached procurement policy. Now, if we wanted to change this later in the year, we could do that and adopt it formally as a board. Okay. So going back to the organizational meeting, we just reviewed emergency purchase, hiring personnel, overtime. Please.
On hiring personnel, the role, I'm assuming there are people that are what we call FLSA exempt, have we, when was the last time we had to look at people's jobs, managerial, executive, you know, these type of things, so we're not in a situation where we're exempting someone who actually turns out to be overtime applicable. The damages from that can be substantial, if you have somebody that's overtime applicable, and then you, it turns out that they're not actually, it should not have been exempted, it can be double damages going down through the years, it's quite substantial.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, again, labor's kind of my thing, but generally, every so often, you wanna take away their job responsibilities, so you get, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, you can only exempt people that are managerial, scientific, executive, there's categories, but you can't just say you're, you know, the credit card manager, Walmart's, and they're exempt, so generally, you look at their job responsibilities and fit those facts into managerial, executive, or whatever, and if they're not FLSA exempt, then you have to pay overtime, if you don't, it's determined that they are FLSA exempt, or they aren't exempt, the damages can be.
So we have a separate Labor Council, Elaine Gold. Yeah, but that sounds like something we could always reach out to her and say, hey, we just wanna review this. That's a good idea, it's a very good idea.
The damages are huge, and attorneys fees are a couple of ones.
Yes, yes. All right, thank you. Can you make note to follow up with Elaine and Dan on that? Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the procurement policy, emergency purchasing policy, hiring personnel, and overtime policy. Okay, thank you Bobby and Bobby, any further discussion on this? All in favor? Opposer abstentions? Okay, Carrie's, thank you. We don't need to close organizational enforcement, we just go back to that, right? Or do we need a motion to close?
Close it and go back to regular.
Well, this was listed as part of your.
Yes, you wanna go ahead and close it.
So that a juicy topic is done, move on to the budget discussion.
That's what I thought, okay. All right, I'm gonna save this file and I will email this to you before I go, so please remind me of the organizational stuff that has all the up-to-date people on it. Okay, budget discussions for fiscal year 2022, 2023, so a couple things, I know you guys all got to sit down with Denise, thank you guys for doing that, thank you Denise for giving up non-working time to do that. I have up here on the board the three budgets, the three budget documents in their base form that we put, we put out, for water, for sewer, and, I do that all the time, and the general funds. As we discuss things and make changes, I've already saved this as a different, different file, we'll make changes on here, at the same time, I have a Word document that I'm keeping track of on my other screen, that's basically just gonna list out all the changes for which, which budget, which line code, and what we did, so that when we're done with this, we know exactly how we got to the final budget and we had everything saved, so that's just kind of a thing I'm doing on the side. Now, Denise, we had talked about a couple things we wanted to change right off the bat, Andy, do we just discuss and make changes up here, we don't have to do, do we have to do motions for each change, or we can just?
No, this is part of your delivery.
Okay. Denise, talk me through what we were looking at, please, initially, changes we were gonna make on the tentative budget.
Pretty much, I believe we're gonna change, we're gonna be on Water Fund.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the Water Fund right now?
But having said that, when you brought up about the planning board stipends, I noticed that we don't have anything in there, I'm sure. So we might wanna add something. 8025.4.
All right, let's make, make note of that, please, we'll come back. When we put this initially out, we, we had listed out, in the tentative budget, the possibility of getting miscellaneous revenue, were we taking that out? That was something we had discussed as a hopeful possibility, if we could work things out for expenses for the year. Initially, we had it in our income, but we realized we shouldn't do that at this point, so if we take that out, there's another couple lines we have to take out to, to match that. Do you guys understand what we're doing right now?
No, it's me again.
All right, so in the water income, these are all the anticipated incomes for this coming fiscal year. One of the things we had hoped, um, was that we would be able to come up with some form of settlement with the companies, um, not, I mean, an overall would be great, but something also sim- simple that would just be similar to what we had done two years prior, where we said, these are all the costs that we have related to the GAC, which we wouldn't be covering unless, you know, if the GAC wasn't here. Um, and we try, we try to get that from the companies, that's something we have been discussing, there's not really much more, I would probably say publicly on that at this point. But we initially put it in on the tentative budget before we realized we probably shouldn't have done that, we can keep it there, but I don't know. Andy, do you feel like, does it, does it, what are your thoughts on if we take that out of the income line? We had, we had anticipated, if we got a deal with costs from the company, we would have this income here and the percentage down later as an expense.
Uh, my suggestion is, given that there is no agreement in place for that amount, that's, it should come off as an income line.
All right.
And actually, Rob, I think that income line should be down one, not that it matters, we're removing it anyway, but-
So we're going to remove seventy-seven, nine oh four from income for water. To zero, I just noted that over here.
But just seven eighteen, I think.
Obviously, that's going to change our total income because-
It's seven eighteen, nine six nine seventy-five.
So if you want to, that American investment plan income is like a plug and pay, pay, plug and pay-
Number.
So you might want to take that out now and then just fill in what our deficit is at the end when you guys are all done discussing.
So when she, when we came up with the ARPA income line, that was to cover whatever shortfall we had. We can come back to that later and replug it in as we need to, as we discuss numbers. All right, I'll, I'll leave it for now, but we can revisit that. Um, where was it Denise, in the, in the, uh, where did we have it built in?
Eighty-three twenty point forty-nine.
Eighty-three twenty point four nine?
Yep.
Uh, so part of this money right here was, um, related to-
That was, had Elaine Christian sent it all?
I thought it was Finley. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. So this line here, uh, was another mistake we realized after the fact. Um, when we plugged in this number of fifty thousand, we were anticipating, uh, another normal year, but we forgot that this line included a one-time thing, it was the well seven cleaning, and that was an expense that was, um, both our expense and Honeywell, or no, it was Saint Obane and Honeywell, picked up the PFOA-related expenses to it. It's something that hadn't been done since before I became mayor, but it's something that's supposed to be done every couple years. We hadn't done it since twenty seventeen. Um, it was about a thirty-something expense of ours and forty-something, do you have that number?
Thirty thousand seven hundred, I think, for the village.
So we anticipated that initially and then realized we're not going to need to do that this year because we already did that. So this line is too high, so we're going to take out the thirty-five thousand?
Actually, after we, um, annualized it and projected it out, we're taking away twenty-seven thousand two fifty-eight forty-six.
Say that again?
Minus twenty-seven thousand-
Yep.
Two fifty-eight forty-six.
So I think Denise, you said that happens every four years, is that-
That's what Josh told me, every three, depending on when the new well source comes up.
So we have a final settlement with DEC and the companies, do they pay for that whole thing, the-
Well-
In the future?
Well, in the future, well seven, under the DEC rod, will be a backup one. So there will be an entirely new regime for the use of well seven, it will remain to be seen how often it has to be rehabbed or maintained in the way it has been historically. Without getting, anticipating all the things we have to discuss in exact discussion, suffice to say that, uh, the more we've looked at the analysis that DEC set forth for a record decision, which is based on the analysis that the companies and their consultants do, the more we learn to appreciate, there are a lot of problems and there are a lot of unanswered questions. I could go over all of that with you, but looking forward, I think we can say with certainty, and that's a scary thing to say, in approximately three or four years, maybe sooner than that, because we're dealing with big companies and we're dealing with DEC and they specialize in America. So if we go out for four years, you'll have a new water source and the entire operational regime will be completely different to what it is now. And the goal for the village is to make sure all of the extra costs associated with that remedy has an increment over what your baseline cost would be, you never had to file them in the first place, will be covered one way or the other by the companies. As you can imagine, there's a bit of discussion on it, I think.
There's a bit of discussion on it, sure.
Um, one more change that we, um, need to do to reflect the fact that we took out the seventy-seven thousand as a water income for the potential deal was to take out the portion of that that would go, um, out, uh, for attorney expenses. So I'm going to lower this number, oh, I'm actually just going to take this out. Because you have that in there as a formula. So we're going to lower this number down to forty-three nine oh four, which is pretty much a mirror image of what we had expected for our PFWA attorney-related expenses this year. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah. So these are the changes we've made right now, just so you can see that, it's a little bit easier to see it. Um, these are things we had discussed prior, we had, we, if we had, I think, done it right, we wouldn't have had these in the tentative budget as a starting point, but we realized after the fact that we did, so. Um, with that in mind, does that make sense? Can you guys see that stuff? All right, I'm going to swing back to the Excel spreadsheet. After those changes, and at this point now, we can discuss anything you guys want to discuss, discuss any changes you guys may or may not want to make in any parts of any of these budgets, general, water, sewer. Um, right now, we are anticipating for the water line, uh, eight hundred, uh, well, we still have one hundred and twenty-two thousand worth throwing in as code, so we'll revisit that in a minute for, for, from ARPA funds.
What's our total amount for ARPA funds, is that the total amount we have?
No, that's about-
It's about sixty-two now, right?
It's about half.
It's like one seventy, two, and change.
Right, minus the computers.
Right, it's the computer.
Right.
Sixty-two, I don't know what you end up on.
That was for last year.
Not, I mean, just for this, this one year.
So let me revisit, uh, a couple of other things, I'm going to scroll down to the end. Um, we are expecting to operate, um, if we spend everything that is budgeted for, uh, we would be spending eight hundred and sixty-eight, seven point four. Whereas up above, I'm scrolling, sorry, uh, we are currently budgeted for eight forty-one. So with the one hundred and twenty-two and change of ARPA funds, if we spend everything in our budget, we're still at a loss of twenty-seven. That is-
I think we could get a hundred and thirty-six thousand on our- seven, eighty-three twenty.
We've also, um, talked about the possibility of the, uh, water usage rate, which on all of the various, um, water codes, we have residential, small business, industrial, tenants. Um, those rates have not changed in, since before my time. Part of that is because that same bill has the sewer bonds, has the water bond, we've been seeing those bonds go up. Um, but it may be of value to look at what increases would be in, um, increasing the rate. Um, I know that, um, Bobby, uh, Decker, you put something together here, I had put something together that showed the possibilities, some of the larger possibilities of five percent, ten percent, simply because those are easy numbers to figure out if you want to go down or up, one percent, two percent, seven percent, eight percent, you can kind of do it all from that. Um, Bobby Decker put together a document, you want to just talk about it, or you want me to?
Sure, I put it together with two, two and a half, and three percent.
Over two different years.
Right, well, third year, two, and then I, I went through all the possible scenarios of two, two and a half, three the first year, same percentage the second year, if you look, I don't think you can pull it up, Rob.
Oh, you know what, let me see if I, uh, got access to that.
And then I put together all the combinations between two, two and a half, and three, this year, that, next year, to get a number. You know, because I know inflation is killing us.
All right, let me try to make this a little bit, uh, easier to see, give me just one second here. Wrap the text, make this a little shorter. Let's, uh, center some stuff here. And let's do it in. Can you guys see that, or you want me to go a little more?
Everyone should have a copy of it.
Trustees?
This is just the rate.
So right now, um-
Four nine four.
This is dealing with just the residential rate, but we can apply, uh, two percent, three percent, whatever percent you guys want to, to the existing rates, uh, Denise and I set up, um, a spreadsheet, so that if we want to see overall, not just for residential rates, because there's also small business, large business, um, tenant rates, if we want to apply-
I did it, I did it inside the village.
Okay.
Both as a rate, per ten thousand, per twenty, per twenty-five, what we have now, what a two, what a two and a half, what a three looks like in the near five and ten. And then I did a total number in the inside the village of three twenty-nine, nine oh six, as a starting point. And then I showed what it would be after this year, two, two and a half, and three, using that number to go two, two and a half, and three next year. Basically, to, to see, I, I got on this because I wanted to see, you know, if you did a five this year and a zero next year. To me, that's a big number this year, especially optics, but, so two and a half, two and a half, or two and two, two and three. So I've showed all that comparison, uh, you know, what it would be based on, say, a two this year and a two next year, or two and a half and a two, or two and a two and a half, every combination time.
And, and let me, uh, give me just one minute and I'm going to, um, explain what this would mean to various usages, if that makes sense, so-
I can, I can show you what my village would do to water.
But you, your, is your revenue o- across the board or just within the village for the one region?
Just inside the village, yeah, I'm not passing up any-
That's fine. Just to give an idea for easy numbers, um, and this was, I think, the thing I sent to you guys earlier. If we went something big like a five percent increase, for every ten thousand gallons of water used, that would increase the bill by two dollars and fifty cents. My household, I have six in the house, um, and a leaky toilet, uh, so we're using something like fifty thousand gallons of water in a four-month pay period.
Well, I'm using fourteen seven, what are you doing, are you in the faucet now?
We have showers, we have laundry, just, I mean, it's everything, we just got a new laundry machine, but that's a whole nother thing. Um, but, um, even, even when we were not having a leaky toilet, we were still in the high thirties to forties. So in, in a situation like mine, if we increased it five percent, that would be basically ten to twelve dollars a bill, for me.
Yeah, and that's all I'm here to, I show-
Yeah.
What the increase would be.
If you go down to two percent, yeah, you're only looking at like four dollars more in bill. For a high, I would consider my family as a family of six, uh, with, you know, lots of boys who need showers, um, uh, um, higher, higher usage, so that's how it would translate for something like that. I know that in the past, I have not wanted to touch these rates with a ten-foot pole, and we've gone very much away from that. Um, PFOA aside, we are looking at probably twenty, thirty, forty percent increases in just the cost of normal water right now, business for producing water. The chemicals are costing a ton more, upkeep is costing more, and again, this is all aside from PFOA, all aside from the GAC, from normal operations. Um, it's an unfortunate spot we're in.
Is this because of inflation?
In part inflation, in part supply chain.
Couldn't we see this company like six months ago, or that far behind in our water funding budget? So we do.
I don't know, I don't know if the, if the water guys knew that until they gave us the proposal.
So I, I'm just, just being where we're at with our budget heading into the year, we just-
Oh, like, that we're going to be in rough shape?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think when we started talking about where we were with debt over the past year, yeah. And then you, you add in the fact that everything is more expensive, we talked about the cost of, um, doing roads is going to be more expensive, even though CHIPS funding doesn't change, the amount that everything costs is like, what, thirty percent more, forty percent more? And that's going to translate to, uh, to, to just less done, because we still have the same amount of funds, but, yeah. Marion?
One thing that's going at me as a resident, I know one year, so I, um, but I speak of, you know, we got really hit last year when that bond got the insurance thing, and it really caused quite a stir. And when you're talking about, you know, it was over a hundred dollars a year, that was shown up on the bill, it's thirty-something per bill or something, I don't have my bill here.
Yeah, it went up twenty-some per, uh, three, per paid period for three periods.
It was low thirties.
Was it low thirties going up?
It was in thirties, it was in the thirties, because I can remember, you know, comparison, like, um, and I think that's the only thing that I'm saying is here, again, I'm a senior citizen, I can only afford to budget. We're budgeting, I mean, we don't live high on the hot here.
Yep, all right.
And I think it, it kind of hurts to again have something like this get slammed, because we have to have what, no matter what.
Yep.
But I think it's very hard for this to, um, be hitting, especially when you just had that happen this past year with that increase.
I mean, we're talking about water rates not going up, but our bond rates are going up, so really, it is an increase, we have increased our-
Because all that happens on the same bill, because the water and the sewer and the water bonds and sewer bonds, all the same bill.
And then there's more bonds added to this, and those sort of things I, I worry about.
As, we all do.
Because no one can break that line.
One concern, mine is that Scott, the Scott Street project, and that was made out of the water funds, which isn't a village, even a village roadway, that we have a twenty thousand dollar bill for engineering from Delaware Engineering for that. What happens in the future, if we have another, another incident like that and we're not prepared for?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, we were ready to do that, but it was the county that required us to get stamped engineering plans.
Correct, but, and what I'm saying is, what if in the future, we don't have any say in what happens? It used to be, the people on that line are responsible for repairs of the line, now the villagers and falters are responsible. This was a pretty small street.
That's where you kind of talk about any separate water business, right?
Right.
Because that, that fix went outside the village, is what you're saying, up to other users.
Yeah, Scott Street is not, is not a village street.
When you think the total published that, you know, outside of the twenty thousand dollar engineering spend, there was-
It would have been a hell of a lot of trouble without it being there.
Well, I'm just saying, we should get, we should think about what's going to happen in the future of those lines, because if another, almost longer line happens, we say between, uh, Delaware's out to Johnson Road, and the village water fund, we'll be getting another big bill.
Well, there's a lot of grants that are going to become available, which is why we're getting everything ready right now.
You have a line breaks tomorrow, and it's a major issue, how can I get a grant?
Well, we're not, but that's the kind of work that we just do when it happens. Kind of, it's kind of built into what we do, because we base all of our numbers on what our expenses have been and we handle lines before.
Get it back together and move on.
Yeah.
All you can do, and you replace twenty feet of pipe, and you replace twenty feet of pipe, and replace other feet of pipe, and replace other feet of pipe.
I know, but you don't, you don't have money in the budget, what are you going to do about it?
It don't hurt you, Kevin.
Yeah.
You gotta give water to the people.
Well, but I don't think it should be on the back- Well, but I don't think it should be on the backs of the village taxpayers.
No, it shouldn't. But, you know, it goes back to the poor projects, they wanted to, you know, have the village take over these outside lines and stuff, so.
Yeah, it never used to be that way.
You know, they had the whole water business, and they came, they came up with all the repairs.
And I remember doing that myself, I mean, the-
Did we?
They changed the water bill on, let's say, I don't know, was it D? I don't know.
That was a local law change?
Yes.
Was it a shared services, a town change, or just separate local law?
Uh, it was built into something else, it was either the the water law.
I feel like there was a water, there was something that involved the town.
It was, oh, the green, initially it started with Green Heights contract, the green living, and then it was then, formally, the Green Heights Water Business Agreement. And then everyone was responsible for anything outside the village to fix it, I don't know why that went away.
And then we took them all, not just Green Heights, we took-
Everybody, yeah. So then it, you know, then the Green Heights didn't become its own agreement, it kind of became like, everybody outside the village.
Andy, do you know where the Green Heights area is?
No.
There's a stretch of, of the corner of the village, it goes up Albany and Saratoga Street, it's the, I would say it's probably the newest development area. And that's outside of the village, and those users pay one point five, whatever the residential rate is, they pay one point five of it.
Well, everybody outside the village does.
Yeah, everybody, but that's one of many locations where our water line extends.
And the other problem with having building homeowners, a lot of people don't have a line, if there's ten people on the street, split twenty thousand dollars, my suggestion would be to talk to them. Well, they used to be a water district, but they changed it, so, that way, they're guaranteed water lines in some manner, and let them deliver.
Especially, we're paying all funds anyway, for the, those taxpayers in the town.
So, I mean, that's just a thought, and I don't know why they, why they changed that.
And just so we know what we're talking about, this is in northern twenty-two, this stretch right here, Albany and Saratoga, the village line, I think it's right about here. You can tell when you're walking those roads. Uh, he was up here, he was up on Mark Drive.
Yeah, but he saw that it was like inches-
One of many areas that's outside the village, Scott Street, which we're talking about, is, where am I?
Clay Hill.
Clay Hill. You're there, keep going.
Too far, here it is, Scott Street. This stretch, I want to say, is it right here? From here up, is, there's about ten properties on the water line that are outside the village, there's a couple miscellaneous ones over here as well.
Well, at least the Green Heights is relatively a new water system, or the other ones are probably hundreds, hundreds of years old.
The stretch on, uh, twenty-two going to Johnson Hills, that's, you know, you gotta, you gotta dig up Route twenty-two.
Yup.
Which they had to do before.
Which you had to do a couple years ago, when there was a break over, over there. So, anyway, so that was just a little bit of a tangent, but I know we have a lot of new trustees here, we haven't talked about the stuff before, so I think there's value in doing it.
Denise, you said, you said, you said that St. Cobain is paying less, that's lost revenue, because they're using their own water system or something?
That happened in sixteen, they opened a new, kind of like recirculating the water system and the plants, so yeah, we ended up losing
It's a closed-loop system.
About fifty thousand in revenue, the, the system wastes as much water.
Yes, even when, when PFOA happened and became a big deal in those twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years, we, we were expecting to see a huge drop-off in residential usage, but it was actually the industrial usage that made us go, whoa, because it was a massive change, and it's stayed that way since.
Is that part of any negotiations or arrangements going on?
We-
Well, hold on, then, discussion.
Well, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Well, hold on, then, discussion, so executive session.
Is, we're highlighting anything in the, that we have agreed on officially in the past, or just wait?
No, that has not been part of the past public agreements with the companies to date.
Yeah.
And the amount of water usage has not been-
Okay, alright, we'll talk, we'll talk more on executive. So going back to water budgets.
So, one thing, because the town did all the tribute, funding for any of those outside areas that you're providing margin?
The town as a municipality doesn't, but there were some responsibilities for some of the owners, but it doesn't sound like that's been a thing that's been going on anymore.
No, they changed it.
Because I think saving the painting that you just spent, for the town.
Alright, water budget, is there anything else you guys want to talk about or discuss, pose changes to? Right now, we're looking at income of eight forty-one with no water rate change. If we did, let me just throw in one of Bobby Decker's changes here.
Throw one.
If we did a two percent, give me one second here. If we did a two percent rate increase across the board, do you have a writing?
Why don't I go through?
We did two point five, that's been bringing nine thousand.
Why don't I go through, I got a written one.
Go for it.
We do two percent, now you're looking at rate per ten thousand, wanna start with just rate per ten thousand gallons?
Over one thousand gallons, yeah.
Well, you want the one thousand?
That is what it is, it's, it's, it's per one thousand gallons.
Eight point zero four nine three, one thousand, for one gallon, right? Okay, two percent. Fifty point three, two and a half, would be fifty point six, all based on ten thousand gallons. Three percent would be fifty point eight eight. And then I show where you have your five and your ten percent.
Wait, you're saying a two percent, oh. So when you have here-
Four plus two percent, would bring it up to fifty point three, per ten thousand gallons.
Are you talking just residential usage, or are you talking everything?
Just inside the village, residential rate.
Two percent brings it up how much?
Difference would be ninety cents, but fifty point three at that point.
Okay.
Two and a half's gonna get you to fifty point six, which is a dollar twenty, this is all for one billing cycle, at ten thousand gallons. Three percent, now you're going up to a dollar forty-eight, brings it up to fifty point eight eight, per ten thousand.
So you build by a thousand gallons, or by ten thousand?
You're going by a thousand.
You're going by a thousand.
Thousand, so you're saying a dollar forty-two?
Marion, Marion. We, we, we don't, we don't. Sorry, we gotta keep things moving.
I think we can go thoroughly on this.
One second here. So when I was looking with Denise on numbers, and we projected possibilities for an overall increase across all water rates, not just residential, but the
Inside the village.
municipal nonprofit, tenant housing, small business, industrial, mixed use, we went through everything, based numbers on the previous fiscal year, what was used. If we did a five percent increase across the board, which I don't think anyone wanted to do, the revenue increase would be sixteen thousand four hundred ninety-five anticipated, across the board. If we did one percent, basically for every one percent we increase it across the board, the revenue increase is almost exactly three thousand three hundred. So if you want to talk about the possibility of revenue increases.
Let's go, okay.
Three thousand three hundred for every one percent we increase it between this year and next year, and again-
If you went two percent, you'd get six thousand seven hundred and thirty.
Six-six, even, according to what I have across the board.
Are you starting with thirty-six?
I did Italian.
Three thirty-six, five oh four point one two, I'm just doing insights, are you doing insight?
I'm doing everything, I'm doing everything.
He's talking about like a revenue number to plug in.
Right. I'm using the one from last year.
In total, I mean, with the increase.
Yeah, I got them all written down. You see it, right? I just wrote them down for two, two and a half, and three, because you already have five and ten. But two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two was three hundred twenty-nine thousand nine oh six, right?
Say that one more time?
Inside the village.
So here's, I know what you, I know, I know why we're having number issues, you grabbed the whole water revenue income.
Right, I also did my rate.
The problem is, the whole water revenue income is not coming from the same rate and usage. As an example, industry is charged more per usage, but industry is less overall for usage than residential. As an example, if you break down that three hundred twenty-nine thousand, in industry, thirty-seven point seven comes from that, residential, a hundred ninety-three. So you can't apply two percent all the way across the board, you have to apply two percent to each rate based on each usage. So that's why your numbers are a little bit off from my numbers.
Okay, you got, what'd you get for industrial?
Um, ba- based on the rate and the amount of users, it's only thirty-seven thousand of the overall revenue that comes in from water.
Alright, I saw thirty-five, nine six six, so. And you or she?
Yeah, I think, let's see, hold on, let me double check. So if we're discussing the possibility of water rate increases, which I, I think we can't avoid any longer, you can think of one percent across the board as a three thousand three hundred dollar revenue increase. One percent for a household of, that uses ten thousand gallons, is going to be an expense of, I think, fifty more cents.
Yeah, because two percent.
Two percent of an increase would be a dollar for every ten thousand gallons. So going back to my example of fifty thousand gallons, if we increase it one percent, I'm looking at an additional two dollars and fifty cents per billing period, which means next year my water usage rate expense would go up seven dollars and fifty cents.
For the entire year.
For the entire year, for a one percent increase, right. If we went to a two percent increase, my bill would double, so it would go up fifteen dollars, over the three pay periods, over the entire year.
Yeah, my bill, I did my bill too, two percent would go up by four dollars and thirty, I use fourteen thousand gallons, probably what you use, Marion, how much you use?
I, you know what, I wish I had my mark.
I bet you use less.
It's out of the balance, write the check out.
So I figured I'd give you like, what everyone else is getting normally, so, two percent, I'm only increased by four thirty-seven for a year.
Yeah, it's a small increase, but.
Well, you know, small increases for us seniors.
They hurt everybody.
Bobby, you gonna say something?
Yeah, I just, I mean, so you're talking, if, you know, strictly the water, and I'm talking about sewer, correct?
Correct, we're not changing anything with sewer, we're just talking about-
Because right now, on the bill, the, they're almost, I, I-
Yeah, we raised sewer one time when I was here, the sewer rate just a little bit.
To right now, it's like the water and sewer are almost, now I can't, they're very close to, you would, things gotta come out, so it's, it's almost the same rate.
And it was for that reason, we didn't want to touch water, but-
Can I ask, so, the usages, we have, you have listed, Rob, it's gonna be, uh, uh, small business, industrial, and mixed use. Where, where does the, a place like the Country Club come in? Is that, is that industrial, or is that commercial, or is that?
All depends on the size of water line, but I want to say there's small.
I think it's small business, because the definition of small business in our water rates is lower than twenty-five employees.
Okay.
So that would almost definitely be a small business. And industrial is, is twenty-five or more employees, and we have, I, I want to say we have like eleven accounts, but like, some of the, like, I think Liberty Street may have three accounts, for different reasons they use water, and, you know, McCaffrey may have a couple, and I think Interface would be the only one.
I think the small business, it's the small business, but a place like the Country Club uses water like twenty-four seven, you know, I mean, a wire continuous.
Yeah, duh.
Do we, do we have to raise the rates for everybody the same percent?
No, we don't.
Some on resident, some on bigger business. No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, can we put a higher, um, residential, or, I mean, on industrial, or would that scare people away, or would that?
I mean, we certainly could.
Uh, with the problem of increase industrial, you know, we're talking about one company, right, is considered over twenty-five employees.
Two, not just the two locations of St. Cobain, but there's also Interface.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Interface gets most of the river.
Lovejoy.
They're right out, yeah, they're right out.
Let me see if I have that breakdown.
Yeah, they're over twenty-five.
Anyway, you guys can keep talking and asking questions, I'm just gonna look that up real fast, because I know I, we went back and forth sharing some of the data there. That's alright, you're okay. So, so just to cut through and, and kind of see if we can figure something out, Denise and I spoke, we have avoided raising water rates. We feel like, we both feel like, well, I don't know, you can speak for yourself, I feel like we can't avoid it any longer, especially with the hole we're looking at right now. And ARPA funds are great in a convenient time, but they are a Band-Aid, that they do not-
It's a short-term fix.
It's a short-term fix, which we know expires, and we know if we're using ARPA funds, it's taking away from other things that we may have or need. But, it's awful, you know, so.
So, being a donor, say, say if we do, decide to vote whatever percentage increase to the water we do, when the timing is off, because new water bills just went out. So, I mean, it would have been nice if we were gonna increase the rates, that we gave people notice in their, in their billing, this billing, so they give them the, what they anticipate, so we can break it, and if we, when, when, if we do that, we want to make sure, we should probably do another mailing, even though, what's a mailing cost, let's just send out, like seven hundred bucks for the village?
Yeah, seventy.
Just to, to give people heads up, if we are gonna do it, and break it down, so just like you've done for us, so assumes, this two and a half, or two percent increase is gonna equate to, based on twenty thousand gallons per
You could do that, it works now.
one-third of a year.
Yeah.
What's it gonna cost them annually, rather than, so they're not gonna commit culture shock and multiply their bill times one point oh two, or three, or whatever we decide on.
Yes.
Because the, it's not gonna affect the sewer or the, the bonds rates, correct?
Correct, it will not affect any of that, we're just talking about one, yeah, one small. What's the code for industri- industry again? F eleven?
F twelve.
F twelve, thank you.
No, F eleven, F eleven, inside village, sorry.
I have a, Marie, so, I, I don't know, I don't know if you know this, but is there a reason why we do it three times a year and not quarterly for something?
It's just always been that way.
Set up.
Yeah, that's why it's always.
And that goes well over a decade, it's always been that way, because we went back that far. Lovejoy is on there. No, they're, they're over twenty-five, so they're missing.
Well, it's not only that too, but I think it has to do with the water line, because I don't know if that's mentioned in that chart, maybe it should be, we gotta check it down.
Jim?
Can I just ask Jim and Josh?
What's that?
What is, what is the long-term prognosis here, though? So we're taking the, the ARPA money to patch over this thing, are we gonna be in a situation, three years from now, we're suddenly, you know, our water situation is a hundred thousand in the hole, and we're gonna do a three percent increase, or something, something silly. I, I'm just, I guess my, my bigger question is, I mean, we're, as a village, we're in the water business, right, I mean, we produce water, we sell it. Why shouldn't, and I realize this can't be done right out of the gate, but why shouldn't the long-term hole just to be cost equity? So, we figure out, this is how much it costs to build, to produce a thousand gallons of water, just to make up some stupid number, a dollar and one cent, that's the cost. That's the wa- that is the cost, and figured into that is a reserve fund that's based on, say, ten years of averaging out, you know, okay, this year we had, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in repairs, but the next year we had nothing, so we, we could estimate that, and we would, you know, say, two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand reserve, based on high years and low years, whatever, which is come up with a, a cost per gallon. You know, and then, and that way, it's, this is what it costs, so if the cost of chlorine goes through the roof, the cost goes to a dollar six for a thousand gallons, and then the price like, you know, these, a lot of these bubbles burst, all of a sudden, chlorine comes down, and we drop the bills to ninety-eight cents, you know, whatever, you know.
That would be the ideal way of doing that.
It would, I think it would take several years to do that, and we couldn't do that overnight, obviously.
Right.
It seems to me that, that would solve all, now there are some, this is some short-term expenses, PFOA stuff and all that, but I'm, I'm just talking about, just purely setting aside the PFOA and all that other kind of stuff, what is our cost to produce water? And we're, we're in the business, and we're not, we keep losing either, Rob.
Yeah.
If I could just get a little perspective on this, obviously, you and I discussed this.
Yeah.
The cost of the product has to reflect the cost of business, that's understood. In terms of the current budget situation, what's your call, Mike? Right, two thousand, and that is- And that is, right now, the village is there in Washington County, PFOA, that we had, if we're settling a couple of years ago, and the companies paid a chunk of money. We made, or the village has made no assumption in this proposed budget as to whether we're gonna get another, each settlement at any time going forward. Now, we can discuss this, you know, in the executive section, but we will know one way or the other by the end of May, whether there will be another inward settlement or what's gonna happen. But let's understand that part of us contributed to the current problem. You know, aside from inflation, the cost of everything going up, you know, energy's up in the cost, chemicals are up in the cost, which is the fact that the village is bearing some piece of that PFOA response. And the goal and everything we're dealing with the companies right now is to make sure that's not there in the future. So, you know, you have to deal with the instant problem, but I'm reasonably certain, though, we'll have a clearer picture of at least that part of it, that's due to PFOA several weeks from now. Hopefully, the news will be good news and not bad news, but, you know, we'll see how things turn out.
Right, now, and that's why I said, notwithstanding the PFOA, so, cause that's really unpredictable, who knows what's gonna be a couple of, what's not.
It's gonna be fine, you'll let understanding.
You know, Denise has analyzed this, and I've interviewed analysis, and why I'm working this out. The PFOA thing is costing the village, in terms of operational water system, on the order of, I call it seventy-five to seventy-eight thousand dollars a year, annually. And so when you have that uncovered, looking forward into this budget period, you know, given the size of the budget, that's not insignificant, but.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and just to go back historically for a minute, I gotta scroll up for just a minute. This is seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one. Uh, these are actuals, so when you go to the very bottom, you can see that we actually, um, budgeted higher and, 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 like, you can see that not every year, when we set up a budget, we're, we're, we're gonna spend all of that. So we know that, you know, the actuals may be different, but you can see, based on what we budgeted versus what the expense were, where we were actually okay, and where, yeah, we operated with too much expense, and it's a little bit all over the place. Um, this year, uh, we're looking to be quite a bit lower, if, if everything pans out the way we're anticipating it to. We'll know probably around, what, July or August, we'd have the actual numbers for the previous fiscal year. So in the past, we have budgeted and set a budget, knowing that if we spend everything, we're fifty or eighty thousand in the hole. The problem is, the more we do that, and the more we end up spending in the hole, there is a, a, a light at the end of the tunnel, which is getting closer, and that will run us over. And that is the, we now have no, nothing else to spend off of, and now we're, and that's a huge, huge thing, which we're trying to avoid, so.
Now, and I, the PFOA is of course, you know, until five weeks on the paper, and the deal is done, and then you know, you know, what we're getting, not getting, but, you know, once we get to that point, maybe we can get drawn to a, heading to exactly, you know, we're literally just selling.
Yep.
That's it, you know?
Yep, and I was talking with Neil about this earlier, I think, um, um, just, just looking back, if, if the, if the PFOA thing had never been an issue, it changes everything that the village could have been focusing on for the past eight years massively. Um, and it, it's just a very different eight-year projection, uh, than where we're at right now, just the, uh, the joy of the situation. So going back to this, right now, with the ARPA funds that we initially had plugged in, um, we're still looking to be operating, um, twenty-seven thousand in the hole. Um, if we increased the, um, rates by one percent, that would be an additional thirty-three hundred dollars. Two percent across the board, we can pick to six hundred dollars. We could figure out if you wanted to raise other ones more or less, we could do that, it'll take a little bit more time, we could look into that. Um, my recommendation is, I'd like to see those raised, even if a little bit this time around, uh, just because of the expense of everything, it just, it just is what it is regardless.
What happens if you don't raise the rates?
Um. Then. It's, if we.
Different, fine, you can't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So the water has to pay for itself, sewer has to pay for itself.
And there are some things that we can pull from both general water and sewer, like salaries or things like that, or, but, but, we're sort of maxed out on those percentages as well.
I shouldn't say that, general and sewer font can help water fund out? Correct? If we.
There's similar dangers.
Right, so, and, and a little bit of a way, but as far as generating the income you're talking about, it would be through water runs, pretty much.
When you're saying, if we increase it by two percent across the board, you're only talking, uh, knocking down from twenty-seven to knocking down sixty-six hundred, you're still in the red twenty, twenty thousand and change.
Correct.
On top of the one twenty-seven.
On top of the ARPA funds.
On top of the one twenty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I understand that.
Yeah.
And Dan is correct, that in general, municipalities will review the previous and anticipated costs for that water fund need, and annually reunite, make the adjustments that are needed annually, so you don't get into the
Right.
Situation of a significant debt. And part of that is also anticipating that reserve fund projected over a period of time, as you will have unanticipated.
Cost of water shoots up in June, and then we three years draw that out.
Fuel oil.
Next year.
You can't wait for the continues.
But then, you know, we need to look at this, like.
I, I just think, we need to give away something.
Find a way.
That, and a complication if it was, right, difficult to look at that, so.
For next year, ten thousand for three months, and we use fifteen thousand. I'm afraid of the pricing.
What line, what line number is that?
The status of the water.
It is eighty-three twenty point four two.
We know even people already frowning on the waters, it is, let alone, we have to have at least three, which is.
Yeah, we spent fifteen thousand last year, and with inflation so bad.
Well, we spent ten thousand over eight months, so mathematically, we would expect it to go up, but we may not have many heating oil bills, because now we're kind of in the the spot where we're not using much, so this is one of those situations where the eight month doesn't quite project out, because the eight months that we've already had are the most billed. So that's why we were kind of okay, it, you know, it may end up being like eleven or twelve thousands.
I'm just concerned because of the price of fuel right now.
But you remember, it hit its highest right in the peak of winter, and now it's going back down again. Uh, give me one second, Mary. Talking about the water rates, what are your guys' thoughts on, on changes or keeping it where it is?
We can't keep it where it is.
I think you gotta.
We have to re-set up.
I think fiscal, fiscal, we'd be ignoring, we'd be making a big mistake if we don't do anything, because we know we're in, I mean, if you don't react now, we're only, you gotta, it's only gonna increase its quantity and keep going up, and we're gonna be in a bigger, bigger body.
Does that give us more, I mean, if we know, now, now we know we're in this much trouble with the water. We can't, I think we have to, if we even, whether we raise the rates or not, especially if we raise the rates, we have to be more responsible in looking at things way earlier, not at the last minute.
Agreed.
Super important. And also, if we can raise the rates, maybe, not that, you know, things ever go down in price, but maybe there's at some point, we can lower them again if things, if we.
Well, I, well, but, but you go, with Dan saying, with Dan saying, is, we're just the opposite of that, though, you know, you really can't do that, because you, you gotta anticipate that you're gonna, at least your operational cost's gonna be, there's gonna be an increase with any type of inflation whatsoever. Not like the inflation we've seen in the last year or six months, but, right, but right, I mean, you're, you're gonna stay behind eight ball if you don't do that on a continuous basis.
Maybe if your dollar goes up.
And it doesn't hurt, I mean, it's bad, don't get me wrong, I, I understand everybody, you know, there's people out there, citizens on fixed income, so I understand that, you know? And we're all, and getting close to that, you know, in, in the same boat, we all gonna have to pay, but.
At, at, I think at the end of the day, you're operating, right, eventually, it gets to, you know, you have a choice, if you go up two, three, whatever you're gonna do, or you can, you can, you can, you can, you can, you can, twenty-six percent.
Yeah, well, it's.
And nobody's raised it over the last eight years, because of the situation we're in.
And, you know, I wanna say too, that it's not really like a last minute finding out about water. We, there's a hundred and one thousand units out of fund balance from water last year.
I guess I would say.
Nobody really wants to raise water runs, but I mean, unfortunately.
We should have a budget workshop, that we have all these numbers in place before today, rather than do it right before the boat, so we.
Yeah, this was a pretty terrible year leading up to the budget season, we're not gonna repeat this again.
And with any other municipalities who have their own water, we do, um, they have other creative ways of funding it, or rob a couple banks, I don't know.
There's, there's not a lot of creativity, and that's literally just, you know, the accounting and projected reasonable, we want to save a possible year for adjusting rates on an annual or semi-annual basis.
They have a way, I see, we're, we're in the, we're in the business of running, that's, that's correct, I wanna make money, but if we operate.
You don't wanna lose money, because it's happening now.
And, you know, I think if we do that too, you know, people, if you raise it, you know, one tenth of one, one hundred to a hundred percent, where people are upset about the three cents. But the end of the day, you say, look, the price of water, you know, thirty-one percent, what do you want us to do? This is our actual, we're producing water, we're not making any money, we're not losing any money, if you're that mad.
And, and as Denise said, we have been operating in the hole for a couple of years knowingly, because we've been trying to avoid it, we, we can't, we, we've probably over-avoided it.
Well, we used the Band-Aid of the, the St. Colman settlements to keep us, ourselves whole, probably not.
Right, I think, or if we don't have.
Remind that. The St. Colman settlements are covering, you know, the costs associated with PFOA, so it's not like the St. Colman settlements were ever out there covering anything else.
No, no, I understand that.
Right.
But some things are inexorable, and one is the price of fuel oil, the price of chemicals, and I don't know, there's employee costs.
Yeah, it is, health insurance, everything, everything.
That was never, ever.
The problem for us, though, is we count on the highest water rates and sewer rates already in the capital district, we're gonna be adding more to it.
So are you talking about like the overall bill, or just specifically the, see, that's the problem, because we have the water bonds and sewer bonds that, that are, that are making this, our rates look awful, our rates aren't awful, the fact is, we had these massive municipal infrastructure in, improvements that had to happen, either because they were put off, or they were mandated, for so long, and.
And, and the bottom line is, if you keep increasing the water and sewer rates to high enough where someone's gonna look at the, at projecting to buy a house, and maybe, they're gonna say, geez, look at this water and sewer bill, I'm not gonna move here, your taxes are outrageous.
But again, that's water rates versus the bonds for infrastructure improvements, and because they're all on the same bill, it's a little bit deceiving, our rates aren't.
Oh, I know, I know, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Again, that's what people are looking at.
Yes, exactly.
Right, and you can't, and you can, you can talk to your blue face, trying to convince people that it's just, this is what you're paying for the water, and they, but, but you're saying, bottom line is, the bill's three hundred fifty dollars every, every four months, and that they don't care what percentage of this the bond or the bonds, it's, they gotta come up with three hundred fifty dollars.
When does that fund go away?
Did you, did what?
We, we, we.
Forty-five, right?
Yeah, something like that. Two thousand, three thousand forty-five?
Yeah.
Say that again, Denise?
Around two thousand forty.
Oh, right, time for the next, seven thirty-seven to water maybe.
Here it is, um, the wastewater one, which one are we talking about?
All.
We're just talking about the top one, and.
This is the sewer one.
Yeah.
This is the.
Other sewer one that I.
Other sewer one that we just added.
And that's the water.
This is the water treatment plant one from two thousand six, seven, eight-ish?
Yeah, that's where I went.
Yep, these are the big ones, right here, and that's how long we're paying for. And again, this one happened, uh, I mean, what, eleven, twelve years ago? This one was actually before that, and this one was in design in twenty fifteen and sixteen. In fact, they were designing this one right when PFOA emerged, and that's what slowed that in design, and eventually the implementation.
Well, it also got modified because of, of, uh.
Oh yes, because of PFOA, and, yeah.
And people wouldn't allow us to take the shortcut to the, uh.
Yep.
To sewer treatment.
So. That's why when you look at this, it's like, wow, that's, you know, fourteen and a half million dollars from infrastructure things that had to happen before most of us were on the board.
Which means.
Back to where we are then.
I don't mind.
Um, what do you guys think for a rate increase? What would be the percentage you think is right? Again, figure thirty-three hundred dollars for every one percent that we increased across the board. For residential users, for every ten thousand gallons they use at one percent, it's fifty cents more for each of the three pays, for a dollar fifty. A billing, yes, or you could figure it as a dollar fifty for the year. So a ten thousand gallon user, a two percent increase is three extra dollars. For me, as a higher user, it's two fifty for every one percent, each bit, each, each period.
Can I ask a question, while I have a waiting to ask? I know, you.
Yeah, so please make it quick, cause we have this, we have to have these decisions made.
And, and my question is, when you, you said you're in the business of selling water, when you send us around spells, uh, Scott Street or Mark Street, do they have the same rate that we have?
No, it's one point five. So whatever we decide, it's one point five that for them, for anyone outside the village, residential. Yep.
Is it, that's the question.
Yep. What's that?
Not saying, but just wondering.
I don't know if we could raise the one point five, I, I don't know if I would even.
You're still raising them.
I was just wondering.
By local law.
Can we?
I think it's by local law.
It would be, we'd have to review that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that percentage is hard and blind on local law, so if we make a change here, it, it rolls into that, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna gain that much by, because the water issue is probably that much less, you know, there's not that many parcels that are outside the village.
Like a hundred or a hundred and. Actually, the residential outside people are at one and a half times, everybody else outside is at two times. But there's still people of them.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make an impact, so.
My thought right now, I would propose a three percent increase. That would be a difference of revenue of nine thousand nine hundred, which is roughly ten thousand. That would mean an additional dollar and fifty cents on each bill for every ten thousand gallons we use. I think three percent of, uh, usage increase, when we're facing twenty and thirty percent in the cost of chemicals and everything else we have to do.
It's a dollar fifty, you say, per?
It's about a dollar fifty for every ten thousand gallons, per pay period.
Nine, nine thousand eight hundred ninety-seven more, is what I got, that's what I got, pretty much.
Yeah, it's about the same, it's about ten thousand dollars of revenue increase.
It's still gonna be.
What would you think?
Oh, it'll still be low, yes, but we're on, we're making steps towards trying to get things closer to even.
I think if you have an increase in five years, three percent is reasonable, you gotta, whatever you gotta do to get closer to equity, with what you're spending, and what we're bringing in.
Okay, other thoughts?
It'd be a dollar fifty, I'd say.
Yeah.
I think, I think if we do this, when we send a letter out explaining it, we have to be really clear.
Yep.
And.
It all affects lines.
I think we're at forty years, yeah, naturally.
Copy.
That's why I would say a two and a half, two and a half. Which is a little more than five now, you could, you know, it's all here, but that's.
Well, I'm hearing three and two and a half, what are you guys thinking?
I mean, for, the three percent is, I mean, if you look at it, so it, it's gonna cost you three dollars and seventy-five cents from my, based on my, 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 like, twenty-five thousand gallons. I mean, three seventy-five billings, it's ten dollars and twenty, eleven dollars and twenty-five cents, you know, for a year.
Okay.
I don't think that's gonna break the bank. At the same time, we can also look, I think we should look at, you know, you're, are you talking, you're just talking residential, correct?
No, all rates, all rates across the board, that'd be all rates across the board. If it was just residential, that would be a difference of probably maybe six or seven thousand revenue. And we don't, I don't, I would never wanna do it to residential and no one else, that doesn't make any sense. What are you guys thinking? What are you guys thinking?
I think we have to do it. People need to know that we're not making money. We're just trying to, you know.
So are you thinking two and a half or three?
We gotta think about looking ahead to next year too. So we went three or two and a half.
And we can reassess next year.
Two and a half and then two and a half. And we'll look, when you're making this now, kinda look ahead to next year. So maybe you don't go three and then kinda think you're gonna sit at zero. We gotta go two and a half, plan to go two and a half next year minimum.
Well, next year.
Which is better than five.
Yes, but next year, I mean, we could be in a very different spot, three months, nine months, so.
Right. But we're in a better situation. We're gonna be in a better spot. We're gonna know our situation.
Yes.
In the next six to nine months or whatever.
But right now, we have to deal with this. And I think if people know it's part, that's part of a plan. I think they might have, they might be able to do this again next year.
We can, yeah, we can explain why. That's.
Trying to bring it up to be even. We're not making money. We're not, you know, we just wanna you to pay.
So are you, are you thinking three?
I'm thinking if you're gonna do two and a half, do, do three.
I'll make a motion to raise the rates three percent.
We don't need to make a motion. We can decide it, punch it in.
We don't need, we don't need to do a motion.
Three percent? We can, I'll just change it up here.
No, well, the rates are different. If you're gonna change the rates.
Oh, you're right. We do have to make a motion.
That, that would be a motion.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Okay, so motion's been made by Bobby, seconded by Megan to change all rates across the board, three percent higher. Further discussion. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Luckily, aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay, so three percent is a pass. Um, let me make those changes real fast. Does that rhyme? What's the water in the line? Twenty-one forty, three percent increase in water rates equals nine thousand nine hundred dollars added. So I'm gonna take the meter of water and I'm gonna add in nine thousand nine hundred, correct? Oh, don't even. Yeah, I didn't need the comment. You're right. Sorry. Okay. All right, so now we've projected in the difference. Income has gone up a little bit. With the ARPA funds, with the ARPA band-aid of a hundred and twenty-two still punched in, uh, we're looking at operating, uh, if we spend everything, seventeen. Uh, seventeen oh, if we spend everything, which is much better. I still think we should use less ARPA and run the risk of operating it more in the hole, but that's just my own personal thing and people may wanna throw things at me and say that's not wise. That's totally fine.
I wanna use all the, two, one twenty-two. I think we can find more than that. I really do think we can find a hundred and thirty. Now, if we, if we make a motion to put, we have to make a motion, but let's say I think we can use one thirty-six and we have some left over. We're at the same spot, right? It's still left over ARPA money, right? Why don't we go higher? I mean, no sense, you know, why not figure the budget out going higher? Maybe we won't be able to get every line we think we can get. And I got a list, I think.
So I don't know if we were, I've ever talked much about fund balance at the budget meeting. I think I have, but this year, as Rob was saying, it was budgeted to use a hundred and one thousand, one forty-one out of fund balance for the water budget. If everything projects out that is projected, we're gonna be more like two oh nine. Which was much more. Long story short, if that scenario holds true, that'll bring us down to about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in fund balance in water.
That's without the ARPA funds?
That's, that's nothing to do with ARPA.
I'm sorry.
So there is fund balance there. Not a lot, but.
Isn't that kind of for emergencies? Well, this is an emergency.
It's what we use to, to, to balance the budget. I mean, we're just really lucky this year that we have ARPA. Because we're about, we would be about zero if we had to use our fund balance to balance the budget.
You understand my question, like, let's plan on using more. And if we can't or we don't, it's still there, right? It'll help you, you know, I think we can find.
Once we decide that it goes, it goes. Right, Andy? Once we decide that we're gonna spend.
What's gonna happen, as I understand it here, is that you take the general allowance, the standard allowance.
Yep.
But you'd identify that as being used for what, for what purposes? That would be reported?
Looking for lines, right?
Yeah, and that would be reported. I don't know the rules as we sit here about, well, if we don't use that for what we reported, can we change?
I don't think we can.
Well, I don't know the answer to that. I know initially, if you're drawing down, using the standard allowance and then in your annual report, I'll get to that in a minute. You've identified, you've drawn down a hundred and twenty-two, let's say. We used the standard allowance. That's gone into our fund, our, our general annual budget. We're using it for water purposes, operating our water infrastructure and water supply system. That, that's telling the federal government what you're using that for, that you're part of your reporting. If you don't use it for that, I don't know the rules. Whether you can go back and say, no, we actually didn't use it for that. Now we wanna use it for something else. I don't know the rules on that.
I meant like.
If we didn't use it, we're going to go our fund budget, right?
We said we're gonna like one thirty-six. Cause we gotta identify each line that we're gonna use.
I don't wanna, but I am having you off. Deb, what you just said is not correct. You cannot use ARPA money to create reserves or rainy day funds. You cannot, those are for factual operating expenses associated with your water infrastructure and your public water supply.
So we gotta find the lines that we think we can use. The government service, eighty-three twenty, it looks like there's a lot. Don't we have to add all those we think we can get? And that'll decide how much we put it in. So if we haven't figured out exactly what lines we think we're gonna use, we don't have a number.
Well, I feel like with, for budgetary purposes, we can decide that we're gonna use, say, a hundred and twenty-two out of ARPA.
But where are you gonna spend it?
And that can be decided by later by, you know, Denise with Andy reviewing it, saying, we applied it to this line, this line, this line, this line. So Phil pans out.
I know what you're saying, but why haven't we added up the lines that we think fit in that and then use that number to put in for how much?
We don't need to because all the lines add up here as the overall income and the overall expense. And we're just looking at those two and going, here's the difference.
Well, what numbers you think you can use legally with standard allowance? Eighty-three, twenty, point two, correct?
I mean, we could probably fill half, half of the budget with the general allowance approach. We don't need to decide the minutia of, we're gonna pull from this line, this line, this line. We're just gonna say, we know that we're gonna apply a hundred and twenty-two right now to. Balance the budget and we'll figure out the lines later. Andy can review them to make sure we're spending them right.
Can I ask you a question? How much the debt says? So if the board makes a motion to use the ARPA funds to balance the water fund budget? Then if they were to not use all of that normally, the income will roll over. Income to expense will roll over to fund balance, not set up a reserve. But that's what we're not sure.
Right.
So we have.
ARPA is specifically, it is very clear that you cannot use these to create a rainy day fund.
Very, definitely said that.
Well, then we can take from other lines.
Well.
We gotta find.
It, it could, it could lead to that. Like if we decide to use a hundred and twenty thousand, we apply that to whichever lines we apply it to. If other things come in less, then that in turn becomes fund balance. But we're not gonna take ARPA funds through the general, whatever, and just boom, fund balance. We're gonna literally apply it, every cent of it. And if other things are freed up, that's how.
We're gonna use that, the other items.
Hold on, sorry. Andy's gotta clarify something.
ARPA is also very clear. You can't do indirectly what you can't do directly. So we talked about this issue as well. You can't say, well, we would've spent money in the general fund on this, now we won't use ARPA. We'll take that general fund money and then use it for debt service. Or use it for creating a rainy day fund. That you can't do.
That's why I think you gotta pick. So you're saying you gotta pick lines out?
Correct. You can't do the shelling. So if you're gonna use ARPA money for water fund issues, you're correct. It should be identified for actual anticipated operating expenses and use it.
We have to do that ahead of time.
I think we can do a hundred and thirty-six thousand. I think we can.
But.
I think, I think we can do a hundred and thirty-six thousand, a hundred and ninety-six twenty-seven.
I don't think we'll have to worry about not using every cent of the ARPA to balance the budget.
It just gotta make sure it's government services and that's the key.
Yep.
So it can't be a.
Debt.
Debt or rainy day fund. So I think, I think we should go over what lines we think we're gonna be able to spend on, get those numbers real quick. Like I think we can use an eighty-three twenty point two, eighty-three twenty point four.
Well, we're, what we're, you're, that will have to happen. What we're saying is there are so many lines we could apply it to. It's gonna far exceed any number we throw at it.
And the thing is, we're not gonna be able to decide that. This, this board, it's Denise is gonna decide it because she knows what, what's happening.
You and me and Denise went over this already. That's what we came up with. We picked out the lines that we think are government services. That way, we're not just, what happens? You don't, you can't use it on this line. We think we could. You can't. I think you wanna pick out the lines that are gonna be qualified and we know.
So say if you're gonna, you guys wanna put a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in, if you wanna go up a little bit higher.
Sure. Sorry, what line number are we going for?
Say go eighty-three twenty.
Community services. You have eighty-three ten, for instance, eighty-three ten.
Eighty-three twenty works good.
Right there. Okay, we're at ninety thousand, three oh two is gonna go right there.
Okay.
So you would take the difference from the one thirty-seven.
Whatever, whatever's there, whatever.
Whatever you want, yeah. We can find them all over, but we wanna make sure.
And then the remainder of it, these budgets down below are obviously high enough. We could probably use that in the first, you know.
Yeah, I can find most of it, eighty-three twenty. I mean, we went through that.
Okay.
But I, I think that we wanna, let's go like this, eighty-three twenty point two, right? Do you think equipment counts as government service? Right? That's nineteen grand.
No, I understand what you're saying, but the fact is that we have probably three hundred thousand easy that would count as government service. Between the majority of the eighty-three twenty line and the majority of the eighty-three ten line, all of that could qualify. So we could throw two hundred thousand if we wanted to and justify it in here. We don't have to do that because we're not looking that high. The number that we're looking to add into ARPA or to use for ARPA is way lower than what it would qualify to be used for under the requirements. Denise just did.
No, I'd have too. I can find one thirty-six. We're just saying, pick a number we know we can spend. We don't have to, but if you got it under control, that's fine.
Okay.
Do we, we don't, do we need to, Andy? Do we need to specifically say O-line item right now?
I just think it's safe.
Go over what the recording requirements are, okay? So the first round of recordings are for expenditures that were made. You didn't make any during twenty-one, but for March three of twenty-one through March thirty-one of twenty-two. Okay? These expenditures clearly are not gonna be made during that timeframe. If the village didn't make any expenditures of ARPA money prior to March thirty-one, twenty-two, there's a recording requirement at the same idea.
So in the next annual report that will be due in twenty-three, do you need to itemize how you spent the money?
The easy conservative answer would be yes. You need to know by that point so that it can be included in your report. What specifics are needed in this report is beyond us right now. I don't know. Um, I don't think it's easy as saying, we use it on more infrastructure. There's gotta be more meat on bone than that.
I would just say.
Level of detail, I'm not sure. But you gotta be prepared in your next annual report, which is due next year, to say you took a standard allowance and this is what we use the money for and it's a qualifying.
I was using what I was talking about just so we, hey, we can, I can find a hundred and thirty-six thousand. You know, I'm, I know apparently we don't have a lot of time here, but.
Well, we don't need to. That's the thing. Right now, we don't need to.
I think you're wrong.
What I think obviously is, there's a hundred and twenty-two in the budget. He says, why is it not one thirty-six?
No, I understand. Yeah, I understand. But it doesn't matter because the only thing that one thirty-six is gonna do is make us closer to being home. The fourteen, because we're gonna be in the red by seventeen thousand, right? With three percent increase.
Well, I would take this.
Yeah.
Right, so it's gonna take away fourteen, you know, one thirty-six versus one twenty-two is fourteen grand. So you're gonna be three thousand dollars in the red instead of.
Let me just throw this one thirty-six.
When I've actually, oh, I went through and picked the lines that I think would be good and I got a good number of what I think we can spend and the ultimate goal is to not be in the red.
But I think what Bobby's saying is that it's, it's a lot to put on Denise to interpret the law and figure out which line we can actually spend the ARPA money, right? That we as a board should make that decision. Tell it to them for a while.
I think it's, I think it's even simply said, if you come up with an amount that the board wants to use for ARPA.
We should know where.
Very simply, the way the budget stated right now, you use ninety thousand, three oh two, forty-one on the home and community services line.
That's right here.
The remainder of it in the source supply power pump department.
And you've already spent, yeah, so right off the bat, there's, if we choose a hundred and thirty-six or a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifty, that's where it comes in. And it's already figured out.
So we've got that. Why don't we try and?
So I put in a hundred and thirty-six since that was a number that, um.
I just do one thirty-six, one ninety, yeah.
That brought the anticipated income to eight sixty-four, eight. And that means that if we spend every single dollar budgeted, we're only operating in the hole three thousand eight hundred.
So what if we find one fifty?
But why don't we wanna do that, Bobby? Why don't we wanna spend our money for there if we use it for somewhere else, not in, just in the water? You use it somewhere else in for.
I figure cause water looks terrible.
I understand that. We're, we're interested, but I, I know what you're saying. But, but it's, if we're also anticipating money coming in during the course of the year, we don't need to spend it, the ARPA money, on the water. We could use it somewhere other resources.
So to fo, to focus, uh, right, so that's.
Allowance to find out government services, as long as it's government services.
Right.
So the decision we need to make tonight is how much ARPA fund do we wanna put in at the water budget? And right now, if we put in, I mean, if we put in one forty, that would basically put us at full budget, we would still be okay. If we put in the original number of one twenty-two, um, that had us at, um.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen in the hole. So where are you guys as a board with using ARPA funds and how much you wanna use? I would say me personally, I, I would like to use even less than this, knowing that that may use a little bit of fund balance for this year. And we have the ability for next year to hold on to some extra ARPA funds, I think, right? When do we have to determine the?
Your, your second.
You?
That's first in the week. You have another hundred and seventy thousand coming in later this year.
So I would be okay if we were looking at a hole of thirty or forty, knowing that we would still have some extra ARPA funds.
That's what they give you, thirty.
So like as an example, let me just say, um, let me just throw in a hundred even. That puts us overall in the hole, uh, thirty-nine. That may be too high. What I wanna ask you guys is what do you think we should put in for ARPA funds? And how much of a hole are you comfortable in for this year, for the purpose of this budget?
What's the fund balance left, Denise? I think we thought.
About one thirty-six.
I thought, you and I thought we'd go higher than that.
That's fine. I'm just throwing out numbers, getting you guys.
That makes me nervous to be honest with you.
Okay.
Because look at this year, we slated a hundred and one and we're at two oh nine. If that's the same scenario, God forbid, next year, but I mean, stuff always happens that we don't.
Yep. So somebody throw another number.
One thirty-five.
That puts us in the hole, uh, almost five thousand. How do you guys feel about that?
And the one twenty-two was how much again? Well, let's see.
One twenty-two adds up to seventeen in the hole.
Seventeen grand, yeah.
Where do you guys fall on this? Bobby?
I, 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 I'm, I'm, I didn't say the ARPA money for, to be used in other, I know there's so many places that we need it. That's why I'm saying not to use.
We got a hundred and seventy more.
I'm just kidding. We got about five hundred thousand more we can spend on, you know. We need, we need about one point seven million on that, one point one hundred seventy thousand.
I'll set that note up. Kevin, what are you thinking?
I mean, you have more ARPA funds, it's better. I think we need to make some positive improvements in the village and not just put our finger in the dam and keep plugging leaks. People wanna see something, like people complain about the sidewalks downtown is, is one thing. People, uh, social media, they complain about, you walk, get their strollers stuck in the rocks and you came and walked the loop without, you know. People get, even our own sidewalks on Route twenty-two haven't been fixed yet. Those are dangerous. Could, uh, could incur a lawsuit on most of those. Even our own sidewalks on Route twenty-two haven't been fixed yet, and those are dangerous, could, uh, could incur a lawsuit on most of those or something.
So what number are you thinking then for ARPA funds? To put in here?
That'd go back to the one twenty-two.
Okay, Bobby, what were you thinking?
That's, I, I think we're in, so just save the extra fifteen or fourteen to where we can apply the ARPA again.
Dan, where are you guys?
I'm, I'm with Kevin, Bobby, especially when it comes to the sidewalks, like, you know, I remember pushing my young kids, those sidewalks on the main streets, I don't know, I mean. It's any of it's changed in the village, right?
We're still.
No, isn't there funding for sidewalks, like CHIPS I've heard, I mean, how much money do we get?
CHIPS funding could be used for sidewalks and roads.
How much, are we looking at?
We have twenty-nine thousand dollars in blood funding, that's been sitting there for fifteen, twenty years. And, uh, I think that would be a good use of that money, it's supposed to be for both.
They just don't know how much it's gonna cost.
Communities or families.
The thing that we are paying on a debt, every so often is being out with their, uh, community, community development head and bills that they sent us, if they sent us. It's not a lot, we wouldn't let rain that cold, if that's on.
All right, I, there's still, I'm out there.
Yeah, who would you think would cost us to, uh, fix all sidewalks? The ones that hasn't come out in the past, uh, ten years, fifteen years. Which I wouldn't doubt, I mean, once, at least once, I had a page on my sidewalk, everybody's sidewalks and sidewalks, I just.
Well, you know what I can do, a lot of people walk around.
I think it's a question column, right?
Yup.
Yup.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna depend on, you know, their price of concrete, you know?
Right.
That's the biggest thing, you know, you're gonna get less for your money. With the price of concrete, when they throw fuel, turp, and just other crap on top, so, the money's not gonna go, this is, uh. My plan was to do maybe block, block, and I have.
Yeah, right.
Maybe do that at least up to Barton, so.
So, from, from where are you going to?
From American, it's good, up to Barton.
Yeah.
So it'll be up across the whole front of, I bring this property, or, uh.
Fast and old museum, not to, up to Barton.
Any idea?
One in front of the museum instead, and then tie in two.
Actually, the worst sidewalk is in front of the old ice cream shop, where it goes into the, uh.
Hey Neil.
Goes in the town park, the, uh, Mary Port's place there.
That's not even a sidewalk, not gonna collect that.
I know, usually there's a sidewalk there.
Stopped, when I went to meet Denise over sidewalks.
It's all full of potholes.
Someone stopped me when I was gonna meet Denise over sidewalks.
What kinda educated guess are you able to get on sidewalks?
We shouldn't fix anything, because we're still not gonna have a complete loop of, of sidewalks people can walk down.
Do you have any kind of educated guess on why it would cost from the region to Barton, do you have any kinda, is it too hard to know?
Well, I had a, tried at least three contractors doing prices, you know, and I know one's gonna be asking a lot of them.
Yeah, but you have no educated guess, no idea?
You think you'd get better if you do more volume, just by the volume, the truck can carry more than ten hours or something like that?
Were you saying you'd be gone?
The problem is you did your contract free job at Shaster, and they can only transport, I think, nine hours across the state line.
I always have the deal, yeah.
Oh.
I'm gonna get it from, uh, the city, they can transport, right, ten or eleven yards, but.
Twelve, eight times the distance, or any, or a six times the distance, or any.
But there's still.
Motion has been made, and how much?
Andy, do we need to make a motion for ARPA funds? How much would, I mean, since we're moving in?
I'd like to make a motion for a hundred and thirty-five.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, up, a motion to use a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for ARPA funds, thank you for moving things on, further discussion on this?
It probably should be stated, you know, to balance the water fund budget.
Well, for, for use, for allowing expenses within the water.
Somebody had to do something, you can, you can hold on, right?
Yeah, yeah Bobby, yeah.
To state the motion, it's, the motion would be to use a hundred and thirty-five thousand ARPA money as a standard allowance for use in the water department for allowing uses for water infrastructure and water supply.
What we just said, one twenty-two.
Well, you guys were throwing out numbers, he threw out a motion, so the motion is on the floor, uh, for one thirty-five, any further discussion on that? All in favor of one thirty-five?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay, okay, false, do we have a different motion? You guys have talked about one twenty-two?
I'd like a motion for one twenty-two.
Okay, so, all the same language, put the number of one twenty-two?
Wasn't that the forty thousand in the hole?
That would put us at, scroll down, seventeen eight in the hole. Okay, oh, I need a second on that motion, Deb had the motion, need a second, Dan, thank you, further discussion? All in favor of using a hundred and twenty-two?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
One twenty-two even.
Yup, opposed or abstentions?
Opposed.
Okay, all right, passes, six to one, so that is what we use for ARPA funds right now. Are there any other changes we wanna make to the water budget? Were there any other changes you wanna make to either sewer budget?
I wanna talk about your fuel.
Or the general, which, uh, which line, I'm sorry, which budget first?
Eighty-three twenty point four two.
In the water?
Yup.
All right, eighty-three.
And we think we're only gonna spend ten thousand.
Twenty point four two, fuel heating right here.
Eighty-three twenty point four two.
In the water budget.
Fuel heating oil.
Yup.
Last year, we, we, uh, budget, well, I know what you're saying, cause this is a.
Cause we may not have many more expenses, but.
I still don't trust the way.
Wanna up it to like twelve?
Fourth grade is, I wanna talk about it.
Okay.
See if other people think that the cost of fuel is gonna continue to go up for a little while this year. So.
What do you guys think?
I think it's a good topic for here.
We can leave it at ten, we can up it to twelve.
Do we know what the price was for the ten thousand dollars, what the rate was at that?
All over.
No, it's all over the place, yeah.
I mean, I think it comes down to, do, do I believe that the price is gonna keep going up, I think it will. I would love it if it, I mean, it releases one million more barrels a day, and it's still.
I don't think it'll go down.
Yup.
Well, I'm not here to discuss that, but, parting back to an earlier phase of my life where I did almost exclusively energy stuff, would suggest the following. Number one, the common error when you look at fuel prices is to take the horrible period you've gone through and project it out and say, we are now in a new reality, and it's never gonna be that. When I was doing serious ener- energy litigation about forty years ago, people were projecting the cost of oil, by now, would be under range of about a thousand dollars a barrel. And as bad as it is right now, we're now back below a hundred dollars a barrel, and it's fallen, I think about twenty percent off of its peak. Now, I don't know what it's gonna do for the year, but, one of the things that happened, cause I still follow the energy markets and study this stuff. Is that when COVID hit, you recall, demand tubed, and it got to a point where demand was so low, that the big oil companies were actually paying people to take their oils to the store, it almost had a pandemic, which is crazy.
Crazy.
But that was occasion, what happened was, when COVID hit, the oil companies simply stopped drilling. And what we're seeing now is the fact that the inventory temporarily hasn't been there to meet demand, and that's why we had this. And the economy became roaring back, and that's why we had the spikes, now, the complicated factor in all scenarios, what's happening in Europe and Russia and Ukraine, but.
Could that happen?
We may end up back where we were two or three months ago, because we're actually off the peak. But, uh, it's very difficult at this point to say certainly the fuel oil is gonna be more expensive next year, than it is, it could be, but, um.
Those guys thinking in between.
Yeah, one of the big elements here again, the fuel, is the cost of heating, that dam.
Gack building.
Shed.
That, 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 that gym that has the gack in.
Shed.
Which is about the size of, and, you know, part of the thing we're trying to do is, is get those things across government. So we can talk about this almost endlessly, but there's, you know, there's gonna be something happening on that one though. And, one person's speculation is probably as good as another's, but, uh, some of the temporary aberrations in the oil market are, I think, are being resolved. And outstanding, you said that some people in the press don't know what they're talking about, the United States still produces, you know, enough energy domestically to cover domestic demand, the problem is in the international market. But the oil industry, for all its faults, historically has always found a way to find products that meet demand. So, the price is well even at.
And I, I don't know how much we wanna get into minutia, but I know that I'm looking right now at getting the water, um, plant internet and phone switched over to Spectrum, we just got that deal signed, so they should be moving on that next month or two, that will lower the expense, because right now we're paying for like a Verizon line, a Verizon DSL, which is junk, and some other approach to internet, and we're not gonna need those, so we are just gonna see changes and hopefully savings across the board and.
There's nothing worse than phone.
Have they taken care of the hardware yet?
No, that's also in there, well, mostly, but we have, we're, we're switching the phone line over to the Nextiva.
The old phone, does it not change yet or no?
That process has started, and we're gonna port it over and use the same Nextiva service that we switched to in the municipal building, which has been saving money.
Is it gonna be done with first home again?
And then, no, we'll be done, we'll be done with all that, yes, that's, that's all in the works. So I don't know, do you, do you guys wanna change this to eleven thousand? The fuel, or just leave it ten and we'll see what happens?
Bring it up, I, I don't, we'd be so far off if we always spent that much.
Well, would let, wanna change to eleven?
Be at the eight month actually, or more, you know, so you're gonna spend a little more, but.
Let's start, let's make it eleven.
I wanna, everyone to talk about it, so.
The other thing you can't predict anymore is the weather, so you don't have to get, you don't need to.
Bobby? I moved it to eleven from ten, that puts us at eighteen eight in the hole, that's okay.
Looks like that one thirty-five would be good.
Any other changes you guys wanna make to water budget? Oh, I gotta make note of that change, um, trustees, anything you wanna change in the sewer budget? Shoot, what was that, um, uh, the water heat line?
Eighty-three twenty point four two.
Eighty-three twenty, twenty point four two?
Yeah.
Okay, added one thousand, okay, and anything you guys wanna change in sewer?
Are we wanting with the sewer budget, are we wanting sewer back, we don't need more costs?
Sewer is always our happy spot.
It is, but we're still using a hundred and two thousand fund balance to balance it.
Really?
What's that leave us with?
Total end, one seventy forty-five.
And leave us with one seventy, is that right?
Not been doing so well, is a leak.
All right.
Yeah, leaves us with one seventy.
So if we spent everything, we're gonna be, uh, a hundred and two in the hole?
Yeah.
What's our fund balance for that?
We funded all this, and fund now, it would leave us about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Sewer rates can be low yet as well.
Why is we, why are we so much more hurting this year? What was the big difference?
That year we slated to use a hundred and twenty-five, year before that, they're a hundred and point three, so it's kind of the same scenario with water. It's all kind of catching up, I think, in water, I mean, fifty grand a year for the last, you know, six years, seven years.
Where's the income from, um, what he takes in each year?
For the haulers?
Yeah.
Sewer charges, twenty-one, twenty-two.
All our vehicles are good repair?
All over at the sewer plant, we're, we're in rough shape with dump trucks here, and we're in rough shape with a water vehicle. And we did, by the way, Bobby, we did move forward on repairing the police vehicle, so.
We're not gonna get a new car.
No, we're not going for a new police vehicle, unfortunately, we can't afford another third one, so.
Yeah, good, I guess it's time to talk about whether we need all of them.
No, seriously, our vehicle's in good repair, do we think, make it a year?
What's that?
All our sewer vehicles.
We, we're not, we're not, right now, we can't afford to improve anything.
Didn't we just get a new sewer vehicle in the, uh, or did we take that out?
Kenny's truck is.
What, the sewer truck?
Kenny's truck, where did that come from?
The bag truck or?
No, the, it is pickup truck.
Pickup. What's that?
I think I got that one too, my trip's one.
Is that recent? Yeah, I thought that was the newest of our vehi- of, uh, our vehicles.
They gotta been given for a long time.
So yeah, sewer, sewer, they're, they're in good shape for vehicles.
That's been all we get for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta try to turn some dump trucks, if you can look through and see the ground, and the guys are sitting in the truck, try to burn this out, man.
That's the water truck, right?
What, no, no, it's a dump truck.
Oh, the dump truck, okay.
I can show you pictures, you can see right, you can sit in the cab and see the ground below you.
What do you think about sewer?
Pretty good.
Do you envision a change in creature's mixture? No? Kevin, what do you say, no too?
No increase.
No increase, I agree, not this year, maybe next year. But not this year, not with a water increase. Do you guys wanna change anything else in the sewer fund? I think we can.
Can I, just a quick question, on the third page of the chart, how many, how many full-time employees are there in sewer?
Two. Two.
Why would we pay seventy-five thousand dollars on your health insurance?
Because part of the highway department is allocated, forty-three percent goes to sewer, seventeen goes to water, and forty to general. So we allocate.
There's a cross over there, yeah.
Yes.
The sewer is the most expensive health insurance for two guys, I can tell you.
It's great, great, great. And I'm pretty old.
If, if you sneeze, they're right there with the patient.
On silver gold.
Uh, general budget.
Or actually, it's not only the highway, it's, it's plus in the office, you know, it's more than just the highway guys too, we allocate our town units, we spend water, sewer.
General budget as budgeted, um, is only three thousand in the hole if we spend everything, which is a good place to be. Oh, Bobby's sending messages during class.
I just sent a trailway, I just sent another dump truck.
Oh my gosh.
That's nasty.
No, it's not.
Is this the dump truck that's taken apart right now?
One of them.
What's that?
One of them.
Huh, one of them.
We would've seen it on our field trip, if we'd gone.
If we had, yeah. Maybe we'll, uh, do an early field trip, I don't know. Um, is there anything in the general budget you guys wanted to, um, change or adjust? There is only one thing I wanted to ask you guys about, and I had forgotten to mention this earlier, um. There is a, um, scholarship or grant program for Officer Matt Waldron, that was set up by his father. I was wondering if we would consider an annual gift to that fund in honor of Officer Waldron. That was something I had forgotten to see if we could find him there.
Can we do that for, out of taxpayers' dollars?
Andy, is that something we could do? That's a good question.
I don't know the answer to that, because I've never had to deal with that issue before.
Wouldn't you be all being, I said, some school, or school, uh, every, it must be.
Wouldn't you be all being a self say, some school, or school, uh, every, it must be. Because schools, whether they give money to, uh, can, or do you want to?
We may not be, yeah. Alright, well then. We'll leave that discussion out, maybe I'll talk to you guys personally about doing a gift, that's, that's fine. As far as I know, yes. I can talk to, um, I can talk to Mr. Waldron and find out.
I mean, don't give, yeah, I don't want, that's not, uh, you and I.
We totally understand, everyone wants to support this, but we have to operate within the, the legal parameters set up for village municipalities, so that's, yeah, totally understood. Um, is there anything else you guys looked through that you wanted us to ask about, or are we good with the general?
Do you want to put in a planning board?
What's that?
Do you want to?
Oh, yeah, where's the planning board?
Eighty twenty-five point four.
Eighty twenty-five point four. We did not budget anything to the planning board? For stipends, that's for planning and zoning. I'd like to add in the same five hundred we proposed last time. What is it per meeting that we set? Is it ten dollars?
Yeah, if we have a meeting in the zone, it's once a month if nee- as needed, so.
So, i- if we have a full board of five?
Right.
That would be thirty dollars per month.
And if we have a meeting a month.
Right, which would be three hundred and sixty max. So, if each group had a full board and met every month, that would be an expense of six hundred and twenty, which is not going to happen. So, I think if we punched in five hundred dollars here for stipend for planning and zoning board, I would be happy with that. If we did that, that would put our operating in the hole by three thousand five hundred as opposed to the three thousand that we were looking at before.
You wanna take into account the fact that we gotta repair a police car for several grand, we're budgeting for three?
That should come out of this year's budget, which I think we have space for. In the police budget?
Budgeted twenty.
Twenty, twenty-one budget, right?
Where would a police vehicle repair come out of?
We've only got three thousand budgeted this year, and we're already at two thousand forty-seven. And that project is not, yes.
Now, we know that's gonna be over six thousand. We can, we're gonna budget three, unfortunately, we gotta take that.
Yeah, but that's this year, right? You're in this year, not.
That's this year.
You're in this year, not next year.
When are you gonna fix the car?
Car's gonna be fixed right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's, who's fixing your car?
Uh, Carmody.
Why do we send, again, this one up, why do we send a car to dealership to charge more than a local mechanic or?
Boy, you're talking to a warrant.
More into work.
Yeah.
It's not a warranty, but it's, but it's also a police, I don't know, the, the police car makes a difference.
Wait, do you have to dig that out because it's a certain amount of money?
I don't think it makes a bit.
Yeah, you should, or, assuming that he can't hear, I don't know what the rules are for working, I imagine if you're doing the calibrated, um, speedometer.
Is there rules that have the police?
If you won't, you set a police on.
Are there rules for like a police vehicle being worked on?
And we, we have our, we have our, our part-time employee who works, who can handle small things, but this is a major thing. Um, I would assume that the reason where Carmody is just based on past practice of what has worked and what hasn't worked, is that a fair?
Keep it in town, change it.
Uh, I don't think that's a good idea, because you got more than one person in town, that's the problem. You gotta, you know, putting, we're gonna put it all in off of bid without anything prepared. I mean.
I'd rather get the money geared up.
What about you, what about you put out for bid in the, uh, the hour we read?
I guess, the prob- I mean, we don't normally experience things like this.
No, we don't.
Expenses, expenses like this, it's normally much smaller, and we won't, if we have norm smaller stuff, we don't have to worry about sending it out, because Greg can fix it.
Yeah.
The, the guy in the highway now, we, we, we just got, and he just started us in January, so, I mean, he's already, he's already paid you a salary in, in, in four months.
Yes.
Well, the bill comes, there's no, they already ratings.
On that?
We'll see.
I can, I think they estimated it.
Yeah.
Well, yes, I will, I will tell you what that is, when the bill comes in.
And is there a law that, some law or regulations that, um, say who and who can't work on a police vehicle?
But that's the kind of thing where I think it would be wise to come down, talk with those department heads, find out what the experiences have been in the past, because one of the things I've noticed, is I've learned things like that, is there's, there's almost always a reason why we're doing it a certain way. Sometimes it's just mindless tradition, but that hasn't been the case with, with a lot of things.
And probably, actually, follows, most of us know that answer to.
Yes.
People ask me, and I can, you know, it's a lot of them.
Yeah, my whole point was, why not, you know, keep it at home, you know?
Why not keep it local, support local businesses, yeah.
The other thing is.
They'll make, they spend money.
No, oh, I know, I understand.
Yeah.
I, I understand that. But there's a reason for it, it's not, it's not just, they didn't just send it over there.
Right, but going forward, we can change that, right?
Was there anything else you guys?
Probably we can look into it, I'd see, I wouldn't.
Anything else you guys wanted to change in the general budget?
Plus it's cheap.
I don't think, uh, did we make a change in the general budget? I just added five hundred somewhere. Where did I add the five hundred?
Yeah, eighty twenty-five point four.
I didn't write that, sorry. Um, what was that line?
Eighty twenty-five point four.
Eighty twenty-five point four, added five hundred in zoning planning. Alright.
Kevin, we ever talked about going up in the rates for garbage? Did we like talk on that a long year?
That was the, the transportation rates, you should go up. We're subsidizing the town residents that are using it.
Yes. Which is another discussion we have to have.
So, we pay like a hundred, the truck takes away the cart door, it's like a hundred and twenty-five hours, and, and most of it's all town residents, they don't pay a damn for it. So, we're paying hauling fee for.
They pay some for it, but they don't pay.
They don't pay.
Recycles.
Reci- oh, you're talking recycles, I thought you were talking garbage. Okay, I understand. Yep. So, that's another discussion we have to have.
They don't pay for, they don't pay for brush, right? They don't, no brush.
Oh, they pour it to make the surface stop, but it's not about that.
No, but.
Yeah, we make it better, but.
Well, wallet's on the table. I'm sorry, Neil, you done it?
Oh, yeah. I'll get you.
Okay, historically, when we had our landfill, the town used to have a budget line item that they would pay to the village every year. To go over and garbage. That again, one way. It's really not a bad idea.
To approach the town.
So, maybe that's another discussion we need to have, is how we can connect with the town, get them to pay their.
Well, well, they get. Denise, don't we sell a permit to go to there?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's ten dollars.
Right, that's, that's, that's part of the problem, because we, we, our rates are absurd.
And the town is for ten.
A, a, a permit line out.
Twenty, they're twenty, yes.
Yeah.
You need that.
Yeah.
And what is, is that where we need to get a scale?
But that doesn't have that.
Oh, a scale will be out.
We looked into the possibility of scale, and it is tens of thousands of dollars of an expense just to get that. It would take us forever to make it back. I had always wanted a scale, and it was like, no, it's just, it's just not feasible for our size.
Denise suggested that maybe we could, like you talked about, maybe there's a, you.
There, you can try, but it's almost definite it's not gonna work.
I think Chuck does a pretty good job estimating loads, but it's just like, the bag of garbage, one bag, I pay three dollars a bag, I think, and.
Yeah. This is a discussion I, I keep meaning to have, and I just keep being sidetracked. You know, maybe it's better.
It's gonna be a agenda for the evening.
Well, here, no, maybe it's better if, if Deb and who else wants to sit down with Neil and Chuck.
Well, you need a meeting, you guys need to do that meeting.
Don't wait for me to be free, you guys do it. Deb, Kevin, Neil, Chuck, maybe throw Bobby in there too, because he's, he's been involved in that, and you guys talk rates and discuss things, and come back next meeting. That would make me happy. Otherwise, it's gonna sit in limbo for another year and a half. Alright, back to the budget. It doesn't sound like there's anything else we need to change. So, if we are content with where we're at, with the changes we've made, um, we can move to the resolution. Oh, God, I gotta find it. Not it. Ah, I didn't bring it up. Give me one second here. Here it is. This is the resolution approving the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Are we good to move towards this? Okay. Andy, can I skip the whereas?
It just gets us to where we are to make procedural.
Thank you. Now, therefore being resolved by the Board of Trustees, the Village of Cusick Falls in the special session duly convenes follows. One, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the tentative budget for the Village of Cusick Falls fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as amended, with changes I've already mentioned here, as the final budget for such fiscal year, and directs that a certified copy of such final budget be filed with the Office of the New York State Comptroller as required by law. As with every resolution, we need a trustee to offer and second it. Thank you. Bobby Decker, you the second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Any further discussion before we go to our roll call vote?
Yes, what, what's the, um, percent increase overall, like, per thousand to the taxpayer, so?
Yep. Help me out here, Denise.
It's a one percent. We went this one to the cap, but.
But, so, that's, the cap is actually two, though, right? But we do one, right?
No, their, their formula, they're.
One point oh one.
Yeah. If they say two, and it comes down to one point oh one.
Right, that's my understanding.
Yep, it's a one point oh one increase.
It's six dollars, I think it's six dollars and seventy cents on a, on a house that's assessed for a hundred thousand.
Okay. So, like six, it's like six cents on a dollar on a house, right? Six point seven.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Shadine?
Yeah.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Decker?
Yes.
Trustee Wari?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And the budget has passed.
Thank you, guys, very, very much. Back to the agenda. I put this out there because we started to have these discussions. I know it is late, so we can certainly table these until the May meeting, but I know that we were discussing, um, the possibility of a leaf brush and or branch cleanup. Um, discussing how to make that happen. Do you wanna discuss that further tonight?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I have a, a, a question. The timing of this is horrendous, because.
Adding this, you mean?
Adding this to be done this time of year is horrendous, because Neil has, all highway guys, they have to use the vacation, he might, like, end it for fiscal year. Every year, we go through this, and, and now everybody's starting to take their vacation, so we're gonna have implement, uh, just brings cleanup, and have one or two guys on the highway during most weeks.
So, two things, one. I, I, he's talking about the timing of this. For trustees who are on the newer side, our fiscal year operates June one to May thirty-first. We had problems many, many years ago with people not using their vacation time up by the end of the fiscal year, which is May thirty-one. There were lots of issues about if they were holding over, giving so on and so forth, so what has been standard practice for several years successfully is that everyone uses up their vacation time by the end of the fiscal year, May, May thirty-one. So, what Bobby is saying is by throwing in the possibility of a spring cleanup right around the time when everyone is using up their, um, vacation days, is going to be exceedingly problematic to pulling this off in the spring season.
Right, okay, for example, Neil, what is accounting, what do you have, two people working today?
There's, there are two today, but one's gonna be two tomorrow. And. I don't know, I don't know, it makes out of, you gotta, tomorrow, people, but.
And how much, how much more vacation do you get?
Um, community service.
Oh, they gotta spread out, bro. This month and May.
But it's gotta be used by the end of the.
And I can tell you right now, I'm, I'm, just so I can stay here and make sure that two people work, so.
If we, what's, what, I'm just throwing this out.
Can't force the guys to take their kind of, huh, you know?
If we, I'm just gonna throw this out, I've been thinking out loud, this is not real necessarily. What if we don't do it this year, and put it into place for next year? Then you guys know that you, or you could approve or not approve.
Look at your areas.
Marion, 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 we have to discuss things. We have heard from you, and we are very well aware of, of, of what your thoughts are on this. We just have to have this discussion, so please, Deb, keep going.
So, if we can't make it this year because of vacations and what, like, we don't, we just don't have it.
We don't have it.
If we plan for it for next year, then people know that, or that, what you, Neil, you'll know what has, has to be done throughout the year, right? This is something dumped on you at the last time, at the last minute, then people, when they want their vacations, have to take that into consideration. And you have to take it into consideration, whether you approve a vacation or not.
I don't think contractually we can set that up.
Right, they gotta get it done, Bobby.
No, I know they have to take a vacation, but they know that, that, oh, they can take it anytime they want.
There's so much stuff that we do with that. You got prep work for the parade, we got painting, we got parks.
Street painting.
Street.
Mowing a store.
Mowing starts.
Coming at eight, eight or nine, I'm gonna have a guy in a sweeper. There goes one guy. So, that guy is actually using up all his vacation time now, so he can spend this, like, bookmate in the sweeper.
Neil, what if we did like a fall date? Would that be better or worse?
We do a fall.
Well, I mean, I, I know it leaves, but we don't do the branches and what Marion's been asking for. I mean, could we set a separate date for that?
We, we, people would, and the problem with that, we used to have a cleanup meeting, the spring cleanup meeting, back when we had a landfill.
Right.
And, and that's been fifteen, twenty years ago. It used to be, and, I mean, there was, you keep going back, I mean, we used to be able to get a, a village truck to come to your house. You had, you were gonna clean out a room in your house, the village would come drop off the dump truck into your house, and you could throw the, the, you know, whatever you had in there for that weekend, you had to open the truck.
Wow.
Those, unfortunately, those things are, were limited in resources, and we don't have a place to put it all.
And right now, we, we're at a point where I'm gonna have to call a tuck man there, at the transfer station, and two of them, we got up there, just get that outside, because.
It's huge, it's massive.
It's burning.
Touches on fire, yeah.
I'm gonna have to phone call to Mr. I never know, and that can be that, you know, so.
What about?
I mean, I think you're over, you over exaggerate how much debris there's gonna be in one of these cleanups, like, if you, if, if each person, if one of them sticks this big.
Yeah, but I can also see residents going out, coming down the trees, like, I don't like that tree.
Well, you have, you have, you put it around the sky.
So, you're gonna be surprised.
You, you set the guidelines, but, so what happens, what hap- okay, you set the guidelines, so it has to be, we said, what, two or three inches diameter or something? What happens if somebody cuss one bigger? And then, and then, and these guys don't pick it up, they leave it there, and then with the village.
Junction with the cleanup.
But, but it goes, it's like, well, I get, it worked three times a day.
I understand what you're saying. I'm still concerned about people putting out way more than they're supposed to, putting, making them be bad guys.
I said, it's just like going back to sidewalks, and you leave the brush, you know? People don't clean the sidewalks like they're supposed to clean snow on, so, probably can't afford all this stuff.
I, I listen, I did some research on this. There was community service.
Community service.
Community service, yeah, I was just saying.
Or work for your, Sheriff's Department, work for.
City Troy does that.
Like, I don't know if it's feasible, but we'd have to provide trailers and anything, but.
I don't know why.
You, you can't, you can't prepare a, this is a, run the quick and true.
No, a Cambridge had one, a couple weeks.
Maybe a cane.
And maybe it's a question, you can charge for picking it up?
No, no.
I live in this, you know, there's a bill that comes separate from everything else, and if you want this town to pick up the crap, you send a check around, a twenty-five to thirty bucks, whatever it is. But if you don't do it, they're not picking it up. Then you become overtime cost that way if you want, but, you know, you would know what.
It's a good idea, you want your son to pick it up, there's a bus.
I think you guys need to discuss the.
Yeah, and.
How many hours it takes to do my work? It can't be long, probably about ten people are gonna put it out there.
Oh, you don't, no, that last one, that one.
Get it done.
Well, it sounds like this is probably not something we can solve tonight.
Maybe in June, when the guys are done with their vacation.
We can, well, here, Danny, you guys.
Yeah, just, just, just a suggestion, if, you know, I understand why the location bill was set up the way it was, and be done by the end of fiscal year, but if you're gonna add on this work, and it's gonna create a change to the normal way which people take vacations, maybe that deadline needs to be extended out by like thirty days, so the vacation has to be used within thirty days of the end of the contract year, assuming collective bargaining agreement runs June first or whatever, it has to be used by, you know, July thirty-first or whatever. I don't think you'd have, if you're gonna go a little bit loosen things up a little bit, you're probably not gonna have trouble getting a agreement from the union, trust me on that one.
But.
You know, and then they have an extra thirty day for. You know, and then they have an extra thirty day, you're thirty, top of thirty days past the expiration date.
We would have to talk to Elaine possibly, have some sort of MOA to, to set that up.
Didn't we buy, didn't we pay, pay them out, didn't we?
In the past, we.
We bought, we bought a lot.
But we don't, we even wanna do that anymore because of financials.
I think the, I think the first thing you do is you call up both the business agency and the casket, it's something maybe you should do, because they're in a contract, you can't change it. And they say, yeah, that's a wonderful thing, I'd like to see that, and I'm like, bring it on that.
What about June?
It sounds to me like, like we need to explore how to make this work, we don't like it to happen, and we have to explore whether there's a way to make it work. And I think Dan has a suggestion, I think Bobby's really, um, interested in making this work, and, and we all are, so I just think, I think I think we need to figure out, if we're gonna make it work, we need to make it work.
If, if you wanted to try something like that, the agreement you get is to do a one-year pilot program and a thirty-day extension. If it doesn't work, then create some kind of log jam in that thirty days, you know what, the memorandum expires on there, and you go back to, to the previous standard. But you try it for one year, um, you know, just extend it out a little bit, and see if that helps stop the log jam. And, and I understand, just like I said, like, just in highway garages, generally, they can't vacation in the winter, they can, it's like two or three days at a time, with the highway, because they gotta look at the weather and stuff like that. That would come springtime, but by snowfall falls, everybody's looking to burn all this time, right? So most of them do have extenders in their contract that do take at like one week, five days, they can carry beyond the end of the fiscal year, or whatever, for that, for that reason, so you don't have this log jam at certain times of the year, maybe something will need that.
No, that's, that's a really good idea.
I don't even mind any of the, oh, I don't want the business agency, I mean, I need a phone call, something everybody want.
There's another idea that I had, I'll just start out, but we don't need to discuss anything further tonight. So much of what we do in the community is linked to the school calendar. What if the third weekend of June, which is in the new fiscal year, but it's the weekend before graduation, becomes the regular time that we add this in? I feel like there's some, certain community events, like the community cleanup, when we had, when we used to have the, um, the full village garage sales, everyone kinda knows where those events are, it wouldn't be hard to pin it to something like that, the third weekend in June, because then it would dodge the issue with that, but again, we, we would have to talk to you if that would be feasible, and June.
I think June, like, it should happen April, you can do it.
Ideally, it makes more sense to do April and early May, because you're looking around, and I'm seeing a lot of improvements in law.
The person across the way, well, they're, she just brings them up and puts them in the garbage can, that's the village ones. And expects a village pick and return, but, isn't that right?
Right, but I mean, if you're gonna have spring cleanup, you probably wanna pick up the stuff.
And by June, it'd be better.
Move the spring cleanup.
Right, that's the problem. Alright, um, I'd like to table this to the May meeting, so would someone like to make a motion to table this, uh, in the May meeting? Thank you, I'm dropping my phone. Second, any further discussion? All in favor of tabling it? Pose their abstentions? Alright, tabled, we'll make sure that's on the May agenda as well. Uh, any other business you guys wanna bring up before we go into executive session?
You gotta do that motion, so authorize you.
Oh, jeez, I got one more thing, sorry. Um, this is a, 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 a fluky thing, but, uh, we've set up our professional services agreement with Delaware Engineering for the UV treatment that we're adding on, it's the project that we've been working on for like a year or two. We got the, the professional services agreement, we discussed it many, many meetings ago, and then realized when we were going back through the records, we all assumed we had passed it, and we hadn't. So I recently signed the professional services agreement like a week ago, on February twelfth, we just wanted to officially.
April.
Or April, because we're not in February, sorry, I was like, why is Andy squinting at me? I just signed this recently, but as we do for anything that, to, to sign an agreement, uh, I'm looking for a motion to authorize me, uh, the mayor to, uh, execute the agreement retroactive to April twelfth, which was the date I signed it. Thank you, thank, boy, that was a word vomit there, any further discussion on that? Sorry about the confusion, all in favor? Aye. Pose their abstentions? Carrie, any other business you guys wanna bring up?
I just wanna thank Denise for doing this.
Yes. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Denise, and thank you, Marie and Judy, for also being here all the way to E40. Um, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session to both discuss pending enforcement order, and seek advice from council, and to discuss personnel. With no business after, I'll give it to Deb and Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose their abstentions? Alright, at eight forty, we're moving into executive session with no further business, thank you.